Good evening. It is February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening is Vice Chair Anthea Brady, John Fallon, Michael Beckencourt, and Marianne Gulubov, Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We have a jam-packed agenda. I apologize for the late start. We had an executive session beforehand that just ended. So we're gonna try to move as quickly as we can and get people out of here. So we appreciate your patience. We will start with the acceptance of donations.
We accept an earmark of two hundred thousand dollars from the Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the purchase of a sidewalk plow.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll come in handy this weekend.
Scheduled for delivery in April. I wish I was joking.
We'll use that next season. Next.
We accept a grant of eighty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars from the Department of Energy Resources to repair and replace the steam traps at the Recreation Department and Parker School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Beth, can I skip your town manager report at this point? We'll come back to that in a second. I will move now to public comment. If anyone's here for public comment, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you have up to three minutes to speak about anything that's on our agenda this evening. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll keep moving. Our first order of business is we have some committee and commission appointments. We have one person to appoint to the Cultural Council. Jeanette, are you here? Come on up, Jeanette.
Should I sit over here?
Yep, absolutely. Sit down. Thank you for coming forward for this position. At this point, I'd ask you just to tell us a little bit about yourself. We saw your information you provided in written form, but if there's anything else you want to add to the board?
Sure. Well, I've lived with my family in Winchester for the past twenty-four years and am a former elementary school teacher. I've done a lot of volunteering in town, and I love the town, and I love all the cultural things that the Cultural Council brings to, is able to bring to the town, and I hope to just be able to support that in any way I can. My two sons are now, you know, young adults and don't live here anymore, but they're both very artistic in their own ways. And, yeah, we've just always encouraged that at home and seek it out in our lives, you know, more enrichment and cultural and artistic music. All of those things are important to us.
Great. Well, they're important to the Cultural Council, too. So that's great. Any questions for Jeanette? No? Okay. Is there a motion?
I have a question before a motion. How do you pronounce your last name before?
Colajay, like the drink and the bird. That's how I remembered it.
Sounds like you've had to say that a few times over the years, right?
It's good for telemarketers.
I move we appoint Jeanette Colajay to the cultural position for the term to expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Well, thank you, Jeanette.
Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations. We look forward to having you onboard and all the work you're about to do.
I look forward to it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks for coming in.
We have another committee appointment to make tonight, and that's the Commissioners of Trust Funds is, is it Cornet?
Cornet.
Cornet. Here, come on up. Sorry, Cornet.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you? If you want to just introduce yourself to the board, we've gotten your written submission as well.
Sure.
To become a member of the Commissioners of Trust Funds, but if you want to just tell the board a little bit about yourself.
Sure. My name is Cornet Beemans from Cornelis. That's a Dutch name. I came to Winchester in two thousand and ten-three and have been living here happily since. I work as an investment firm in Boston. It's my passion, and I think working for this Commissioner of Fund, Trust Fund, is, I think it's an honor, and it's, I believe in the destination of the funds and in the longevity, in its objectives. And I feel that I can use my expertise and experience in investing to help manage the fund in a respectable manner. I can tell a little bit more about myself. I've been, I'm an economist by nature. I worked as an international economist, US economist, global fixed income portfolio manager, European equity portfolio manager. Then I switched to global equities, and I was asked to help set up a global equity team in Boston for a Dutch Belgian firm. And it was successful, but then after ten years, I decided to work for a smaller firm, investment boutique, also based in Boston, that adheres to more sustainability themes. So in addition to investing money on behalf of all sorts of fund participants, pensioners, I also believe that to do it in a sustainable manner is both less risky and is also equally attractive from an investment perspective. So that is my daily job, and, yeah, I want to bring in my insight and experience to this trust.
Well, we appreciate you willing to serve past your daily job and continue working in your free time for free. So we appreciate your knowledge and help. Any questions from any board members?
Just one quick question. You know, you mentioned the sustainability piece is a little bit more of your focus now, and I think a lot of public and private sector have been looking to do that, and obviously, it can't happen in one fell swoop, but, you know, incrementally over a period of time. Is that something you think that Winchester could do, you know, and focus on over, you know, a relatively short period of time to make some incremental change?
Yeah, well, I mean, it is not my aim to do so. I think it is a towns matter. I can invest according to all sorts of principles and guidelines, and that's how I do it in my daily job, right? I mean, we want to fulfill the aspirations and the risk guidelines of clients, and if they adhere to certain values, certain guidelines, we can simply adhere to that. So I'm just bringing expertise with regard to this subject matter, but it is not my intent to execute such a policy from the onset, because that is not the way I operate, and I would like to operate. I think it's a town matter. I just bring an additional sort of skill to general investment skills, I believe.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No questions, but just a comment, you know, to have somebody like this volunteer and just volunteers all over town in different boards, how much the town would have to pay to hire this kind of expertise and to have somebody volunteer for this position. Just, thank you.
I can give you the dollar equivalent, but I won't.
Thank you for volunteering your time.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I move we appoint Cornet Beemans to the Commissioners of Trust Funds for the term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. Welcome aboard. Thank you again for your service. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Next up, Winchester Youth Baseball Gifts and Kind. Jason, Chris, do you want to come on up? You know it's gonna snow all week, and we're talking about baseball.
That doesn't stop us.
Guys, were you thinking you're gonna get out there in like the next two weeks, huh?
That was a witchful thinking.
It's been really mild, so that means it's gonna snow like four feet in April.
That's when we're gonna have the sidewalk plow.
In April, it's gonna be.
In April, right?
Freak snowstorm. We'll be ready. Appreciate the Select Board's time on this side. Speaking on behalf of the softball side of the Winchester Youth Baseball Softball, and I'm Jason Capodano. Chris Gannon is the President of Winchester Youth Baseball Softball Board itself. We have two gifts that we'd like to award the town, or gift to the town, is, the first one on the softball side is Ginfield with the replacement of the backstop, Gin Lights, as well as the building out of the two, rebuilding of the two dugouts that got washed away over the years of rain and wear and tear on them. So we're looking to gift to the town approximately, lost my piece of paper, approximately twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for those two projects to continue the repairing and the improvement of Ginfield, what we call Ginfield Lights, over in Winchester.
I'm Chris Gannon. I won't give too much of my background, but I, you know, I went, grew up in Arlington, live here obviously now, went to Boston College, played baseball there. I played baseball in Germany and in South Africa, of all places. So in the Netherlands, they call it honkball, but in Germany, it's still baseball, but, and that's not a joke. It's really called honkball. The gift that we are proposing is just to do the batting cages over there on Newtown. So batting cages are surrounded by chain link fence with nets hanging inside. So two things that's wrong. Chain link is a disaster for little kids. So they all have to funnel in through one direction. It's hard to really run. The way that you really want to run baseball, like to get real skill development, is run station by station by station. So each kid progresses from one station to the next to the other station. The way it's set up now with the chain link, it's hard to get kids in and out. They all have to go in through one, and they end up wasting like fifteen, twenty minutes of time. So I think if we get rid of the chain link, we work with the posts that are there, those are the ones that are actually hanging the nets already anyway, so without the chain link, I think we have plenty of support, and you can set up three different nets, and then we can set up all kinds of what we would call sort of soft toss tee stations. So that's individual work where kids can kind of hit into the tees, and I'm sure people have seen tees, you know, and I always tell the kids, pros use tees, we're gonna use tees. And I think it would just be a much more effective way to kind of get everybody in these skills and to, you know, just improve the flow of practice and stuff. So eleven thousand five hundred is the cost for the materials in terms of, you know, the removal of the fence and all that work. You know, we can hang the nets. We do that every year. It's just removing that fencing, which I'm comfortable doing, but we're gonna work with Mike Wise at the town to figure out. But it should be a pretty simple project, and hopefully, you know, with your, you know, with the approval, we can get it done. How's that? I'm excited with Jason, huh? I'm a softball player in town, so of course, I think this is.
I retired. I think, do you still play?
I do. Yeah, you can call it that, I guess. It seems like I lose a lot of balls if I'm in left field, and so it's, it'll, hopefully, the lights will help. If they don't, I don't know what to say.
Just don't take away the shore porch in left field.
Not doing that.
Right field.
Right field.
Right field, not left field, right field. Has staff reviewed this?
Yeah, so they've worked with Meg White and Mike Wise from DPW. I think we are in concept fine with what they're proposing. This would have to be done as a gift and kind, similar to what we did out on Manchester Field not that long ago. So I think the board can approve kind of the concept of it. They have to pay prevailing wage since they're working on town property, so any vote of the board should encompass that, and then also that they just need to work with town staff. And then, once the work is complete, they'll come back to the board, and we can do the formal acceptance.
Is the work going to change the footprint of anything, like the cages or?
The work, oh, you want to speak to the cages?
Yeah, cages, no, it's all right.
So it will be in the same where the cages are right now. It's just, okay.
And we checked Ginfield, you're reusing everything that's there, so.
Reusing everything that's there with an extension of a fence down the first and third baseline to protect the stands and spectators on that side.
So it doesn't trigger Conservation Commission review, which was one of the questions I think we had, right?
Correct, and I, we did get a chance to talk to Elaine, and she said it's, we're all set on that side.
Yeah, because there's also, you know, there's a creek also at Newtown, right, so want to make sure that it doesn't affect that, and also, we just put in all new infiltration system there, so.
Yeah. Taking out the fence and putting.
Yep, the exact same.
If there's any digging, we need to make sure that DPW's.
There's a lot of stuff underground there now.
Other questions?
I just make one request. We need to do Ginfield, oh, this is for Mike Wise. There's a tree growing inside the left field pole, like in the field. I said Jay and Mark and all, someone's like, hey, how about you guys cutting this down? It's in the field. I'm like, okay, let's just get it out of the field. Seriously, just have them cut it down. Pull it out. It's absurd. Is that fair?
I'm not saying that word.
I know there's like a tree canopy in town, but that's in the field of play.
It is. I will say, just, there was gonna be a future project, which is, we're gonna request the town through. It's not. It's not probably going into the fall, which is going to be the replacement of that outfield and sprinkler systems. And I imagine we can address that, but there's certain rules when you take down a tree and have to put up.
So don't run into the tree.
Make any promises.
You play the outfield?
I've hit a ball that's far.
It depends if it's early in the game or late in the game, you know? So thank you guys for all this attention to Ginfield as well, just over the past few years. You've really been steadily investing in it and, and you can see in the, and the program wise as well too. With softball, there's been, you know, huge amount of kids coming into it and it's been awesome just to see. So thank you.
I think with the dugouts there this year and it looking pretty, you'll see a huge difference.
Yeah.
So step one with the infield last year and now this year with the, with the dugouts.
Yeah, it's awesome.
That's great. I just signed my eight-year-old for softball for the first time, so.
Got to make a run. As long as you're making your run, I'll make.
We all set.
Uh, no, thank you very much for this. As Mike said, this is a huge, you know, the, the program's serving more and more kids every year. You know, you go down there on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, it's, it's a great atmosphere. It's great to see kids getting out, playing sports like that. So thank you for all this. We much, we appreciate. You guys were here last year. You did some work to the infield, I believe, on field C or is it C?
No, it's okay.
Is it C or A?
Two years, two years now.
Yeah, so.
C and then the three infields at Gin.
Yep, so that was great work. So thank you again.
If there's a motion just to approve the concept along, as long as they pay prevailing wage and they work with town staff, we can adopt it.
I move we approve the concept for the Winchester youth, youth baseball gift and kind, provided they pay, pay prevailing wage and work with the town staff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Griffin Museum lease. Krista is here. Come on up. How are you Krista?
I'm all right. How are you?
Good. Do you have anybody with you or are you?
I do.
You want to call up?
Sure, come on up.
So I've got Mike Burka with us, who's a member of our board.
How are you?
Hello.
So just to recap, I think it was, was it Fall Town Meeting or Spring Town Meeting? They all bung together. Fall Town Meeting, we voted, Town Meeting authorized the select board to amend the lease with the Griffin. At that time we presented on several capital improvements that you were looking to do at the Griffin. And you came before the board and you gave us a presentation. I think you're a little further along now in the process.
We are.
So you're now asking for the lease to actually be amended in the funds from the endowment account to be released to the Griffin for use of the project. So why don't you tell us a little bit about where you are at the, with the project at this point?
At this point, we're interviewing contractors. We have anticipated closing the museum for six to eight weeks between July and August to do renovations to the exterior and interior, upgrading bathrooms, kitchen and putting on a new roof and repainting and doing exterior lighting.
So exterior lighting will go with the patio, which.
It'll go with the patio, the rotary.
Which is quickly becoming a great place to host all sorts of cultural council events.
That, that first beer garden's coming right up. So everybody's very excited about that. The Rotary did give us a, a grant for materials to enhance patio lighting out on the terrace. So we're excited about that. The lighting designer is currently working on their plan.
That's great. So all this work will be done this summer? Is that while the museum is closed?
That's the plan.
So you're looking for $150,000 to use out of the endowment fund that currently has about $200,000 in it. So there'll still be a $50,000 balance remaining in that. And it's not to dip below that $50,000. And again, this account was set up 30, 30.
30 years ago.
30 years ago, maybe a little longer, you know. You know, in, because the town didn't know what was going to happen with this project. And to say it's been a wild success is an understatement, I think. It's been, you know, the Griffin has just grown to be a, a great community partner in many aspects. You know, you attract people from all over the world to come. I see them walk by my office, you know, to, to come. They come not only to visit the museum, but to also shop, have lunch and, and dinner and things like that. And at night, you know, you still, you know, when I'm leaving my office sometimes late at night, I see some, some lively programming going on there as well. So, you know, anything the town, I think, can do to assist in, you know, refreshing the Griffin would be a huge benefit for the community as a whole. So I fully support this. I'm not sure what everyone else thinks, but you know, I think this would be wise investment on the town standpoint to allow this, this project to go forward.
I agree 100%.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, sounds like everybody's in agreement. So if there's a motion, we can amend the lease as presented.
I move we approve the Griffin museum lease as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none. It passes. Good luck with the work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. You'll all see a bright refreshed museum in September. But in the meantime, there'll be the three beer gardens and some other things happening on the terrace.
All right.
Look forward to seeing you out.
Thank you. I think we've taken care of all our public guests. Roger doesn't count. He's regular. We'll get to you Roger, I promise. Let's go back up to Beth to your report.
Sure.
Thanks for waiting.
So first up, I have an appointment. So in accordance with section 4-2B of the town charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works to head, head school custodian of Danny, Daniel Medwar from Wilmington. And I respectfully requested the board waive the 15-day appointment period.
Any questions? Motion?
I move we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Daniel Medwar to the DPW's school head custodian position.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed. It passes.
So I just had a few other updates I thought I would quickly run through. So first I wanted to mention the town has received a second year of the municipal cybersecurity awareness grants. We just completed that last year. And I'd like to thank our IT director, Matt Griffin, for moving forward with getting us signed up for a second year of training. Also, I want to mention that the board may recall that we did receive from, some money from the state under the winter recovery assistance program. So I'm happy to say that we're using, DPW is using a lot of that money for repaving and sidewalk repairs. But we have allocated a portion of that money for some traffic and pedestrian improvements. So we're actually purchasing six radar speed, radar speed feedback signs. So we have a few of those already around town, but it's basically when you drive by, it flashes if you're going over the speed limit. We're installing two on Highland Ave, two on Forest Street and two on Palmer Street near the Parker Ellis Tennis Courts. We've also purchased four rapid flashing beacons. So the pedestrian signals where you push. So when I say four, it's two locations, so two at each location. One, two of them, then we're going to put at Waterfield Road at Church Street where we just redid the intersection there between Studio and the Common and Bank of America. And the other one will go at the crosswalk that was installed a few years ago on Highland Ave near Hillcrest Parkway. So I think those are going to be great improvements. And we've tried to pick areas that we know there's, we've had a lot of feedback and concerns from residents on, from speeding and from pedestrian safety. So very happy to be able to move forward with those projects.
Beth, can I ask Highland, I'm assuming is from south border to Forest?
Right, yeah, sorry. That, we, we've put a few of the few on the other end. So we're, yeah, we're putting them not, not at the hospital, but kind of between the hospital and like around Euclid, I think is where we were putting them on. Yep. Also, I want to mention the town has been notified that the Massachusetts Housing Partnership has received a request for determination of project eligibility from the Melanson Development Group for the property at the corner of Washington Swanton Street. As we all know, they are currently in the due diligence period for that project with the town still being a landowner. We have 30 days from the date of the letter, which was February 15th, to submit our comments to MHP. We're working with town council and I think that will be on the agenda for, for next week to kind of formally have a discussion. I did want to mention that MHP has scheduled a site walk for next Monday, March 6th at 11:00 AM. I'll, I'll send out an email to the board, to the planning board, to the housing partnership board, a few other people, just letting everybody know that that meeting is taking place. The warrant for the town meeting, springtime meeting will close on Friday, March 10th, so not too far away. The first night of town meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 24th. Our annual town election is scheduled for Saturday, March 18th at the Winchester High School Gymnasium. And the deadline to apply to vote by mail is March 13th. There's lots more information on the town's website or you can contact the town clerk if you have any questions. A variety of construction projects going on, most of which is mostly being limited by the weather now that we've actually have some winter weather. They are still moving forward on the Main Street Bridge railing repairs to complete the bridge caps out there. So they finished one side and we're working on the, on the downstream side currently. Transfer station renovation, we are still waiting on Eversource to schedule the demolition of the incinerator building. So that, that, Eversource has some work that's holding up that, that building coming down. Parker's modular classrooms are moving forward with our modular contractor to get that work and get those classrooms up and running for the September school season. We have several projects out to bid currently, the Lake Street Bridge project, which we're going to have Wes and Sampson come in and give an update to the board next week about that project. Winter Pond Water Quality Project, the larger Parker School improvements and then also the South Reservoir Dam Aeration Project that the board funded with ARPA funding a couple of months ago, moving forward on that. And I just wanted to mention in the community events that there are a lot of great programs that are the Winchester Coalition for Safer Community are sponsoring. They're actually having a program this evening on youth mental health first aid, which has been wildly popular. There's a second session scheduled for next Monday, March 6th. And then also just finally, I wanted to mention that our INCA, INCA does have a food pantry that's available by appointment on Sundays and Mondays for any folks in the community who may, who may need that resource. And I think that's all I had. Happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, is this coming up later on, the outdoor dining applications?
Yep.
You, you getting to that later on?
Yes, yep. That's an agenda item. Yep.
Other questions? Well, thanks Beth for the update. I think right now, actually, I'm going to go, why don't we go to item number nine, the outdoor dining applications review? John mentioned it. Maybe we can clean these three items out and then go back to the other items. So I don't know if everyone, Beth has a list. There was one update, I believe. I believe China Sky has now pulled their application at this point?
I think it's on hold for the moment and we'll bring it back next Monday if they decide to go forward.
Yep. So it would be the, the restaurants that we have had in the past and it seems like they're all the same setups as before. Are there any, they're all taking three parking spots in basically the same location they were the last time. Are there any questions on those?
Ju- just two things. As far as the Black Horse, we just talked with Jimmy and say, hey Jimmy, you know, when service is over, shut the music off, right?
Yeah, so I think I included in here the hours, dining hours that they requested and also their common Vic hours of operation. Our recommend, staff recommendation is that, that we not allow any outdoor dining use after 10:00 PM and that they have to turn off all entertainment or, or anything at that, at that point. And obviously their common Vic hours can go beyond that. So people can move inside if it's after 10:00, 10:00 PM if they want to do that.
And that's consistent with what we've done in the past, right?
I think so. Yep.
You know, Lucia's, I mean, I think it's a great, they keep making that better every year. I just didn't know about the comments here. Is there a compliance issue that they?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure when, when we, when the board votes it, that we include a condition that they have, include the ADA accessibility. And they also, the ABC regulations require it to be like a barrier between the sidewalk and the service area where there's alcohol being served. So if you look at Black Horse or First House Pub have more of a, First House has like a.
Can be a rope, yeah.
Yeah, it can be a rope. So they just need to, we just need to make sure.
Yeah, I think they had, they must have not left out their application, but they had a red, red chain last year at Lucia's, I think.
Lucia's?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought they had.
They didn't have anything.
Oh.
They did when I was there. They had a chain.
Well, they know when they know you're coming.
Mooch is coming.
Well, certainly, I mean, I think to, to your point, John, I think these notes are all easy fixes.
Yeah, absolutely. I didn't want to make, I think it's all great.
And then the hour is the same thing. I think it's just, you know, 10 o'clock is what the staff recommendation is. That's what we've done in the past. So there, there are people that actually live on Thompson Street, I know.
Right.
And, you know, the Black Horse music seems to just be going all the time, even in the morning. I just, I just think they forget to shut it off, so outside. So that's an easy fix as well. Any questions or discussion about this?
I don't have any questions except if we heard anything on, I think Karma that was looking to go into the spot, that location.
We have.
Okay.
Well, today, I think they applied for a liquor license.
Right.
They're not, they're, we don't know when they're going to open.
Okay. Yeah, well, it was just they pulled the demo permit like a year ago and did, you know, demoed and then.
They were waiting, weren't they? Were they before the design review board or somebody with the?
Oh, okay.
About their.
I'm not sure.
I think there's, they're, they're.
Sign valid.
No, I thought it was their frontage. I don't know. They're working. They're actively, but they did apply for liquor license. The application came in today.
Oh, okay, great.
That's what Gemma's in here for.
Yeah, and I, well, I didn't know if they, if, you know, their, their outdoor space is separate anyways, but looks like they, I didn't know if they were doing something different out there.
They did not apply for on-street. They, they don't need an approval for the patio space that they have.
Yeah. I was curious. I get a lot of questions about it, that's why, so.
Yeah, it's a nice space.
Yeah, mostly for my wife, but.
Coming soon. Coming soon. All right, so if there's no discussion or, or comments, do you want to approve all of these except for China Sky? We'll keep it on hold at this point with those changes.
Do we need individual motions?
I think that's how we did it last year.
We did it last year that way.
So just as to what I sent you the email, I can give you this one here. Is it, along with the 10 o'clock, the timeframe, it also has to state, you know, three parking spots per year. And then this here has to be done because they need permission to take it from the, the alcohol from the restaurant. Got it? On the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
And then just the Lucia's one, I think, just add the comments about the, um, yeah.
Um, do I need to add the time changes in there?
I think, yeah, I think when you do the motion, it should say that they are, can't go past 10:00 PM. Yep.
Okay. I move we approve the use of three parking spots and the use of the sidewalk, oh, wrong one. And the use of the sidewalk on Church Street to be, to be used for outdoor dining for a tavola, no later than 10:00 PM.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the use of three parking spots and the use of the sidewalk on Thompson Street to be used for outdoor dining for Black Horse Tavern, no later than 10:00 PM.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the use of three parking spots and the use of the sidewalk on Main Street for outdoor dining for First House Pub, no later than 10:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the use of three parking spots and the use of the sidewalk on Mount Vernon Street in front of the restaurant frontage to be used for outdoor dining for Lucia's, no later than 10:00 PM with the addition of ADA access and adherence to the ABCC patio and outdoor areas guideline number three, that the premises must be enclosed by a fence rope or other means to prevent access from a public walkway.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's, the vote is to approve all those as the plans were presented to the town, right?
Yes.
All right. And then Beth, just on, I think the only other thing would be the Black Horse music. We can still have that administered.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and then we'll have to see what happens with China Sky. All right, so I think that takes care of outdoor dining for now. Just number 11, the March 18th, 2023 election warrant. Anyone have any questions on that discussion? Looks fine to me. If there's a motion, we can approve that.
I think you're just, you just need to sign it.
Oh, do we need to sign it?
Yeah.
We weren't sure where to put it, so we put it there.
All right, we'll remember to sign that.
All you have to do is sign it.
Oh, okay.
She approved it in December.
All right, we'll sign it. Remind me. And then the Lynch Project Funding Agreement. So we.
Just the motion then, I think.
So I think we're going to have to do this every time.
This will not be the last time.
Right.
It's going to be my last time.
I don't know, we might be able to squeeze one more in.
Thank you. Paper is so helpful. I just. Was it in the packet that I was looking at? Yeah, it's, this is directly what I have on a screen in front of me.
I was looking at it too, and I just, I was just holding it in my hand, sorry.
Um, and we authorize the town to enter into and be bound by the project funding agreement for the Lynch Elementary School project, and to authorize the town manager to execute the document on behalf of the town.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Great. Alright, so I think that takes care of everything but the consent agenda, and then we're gonna move back up to items number, number four, the FY24 budget, so. So we have FY24 Budget Capital Planning Committee in ARPA, and then the State of the Town Committee. These kinda all go together into, um, you know, financial planning. So I'm gonna let Beth start. Uh, I think she present, gave everyone a copy of her financial plan, which is in the binder. Thank you, Beth. Uh, and then, um, just a presentation to make that we can discuss.
Thank you. So I figured, um, I would just take a minute. Been a lot of discussion over the past few months. I would just take a minute to kind of recap where we ended up. You all have copies of the financial plan at table. There is also on the town manager's website a copy of this financial plan as well as previous years. Um, so, big picture, where we ended up. We have, uh, a projected FY24 expenses of 149,661,050 dollars. Uh, the budget overall maintains level services and also includes several new initiatives on the municipal side. Um, the projected FY24 revenues are, are just below that, um, expenses at 148,950,902 dollars. So we have a projected budget deficit of just over 710,000 dollars. Um, as we've talked about, the full amount of the overhead was used to balance the FY22 budget, so we have a structural deficit that started in the current fiscal year in FY23. Uh, and pri, based on our prior conversations with the Board, um, there's been a commitment to fund the FY24 deficit using ARPA funds as opposed to free cash. And I think it's probably easier if you have questions as I'm going along, if we just kinda jump in and-
Sure.
-ask about things. Um, so, just quickly going over the revenue assumptions again, I know we've kinda talked about this, but just to let everybody know kinda where we landed. The new growth, we assumed 950,000. The FY23 budget assumes, um, the 850,000. And the, the little graph here on the, on the side shows kind of the history of, of new growth. Um, obviously FY21 and FY22 were large, large and kind of outliers compared to the previous years, but, um, we felt comfortable going with the 950,000 in the FY24 budget. Um, state and aid number, we assumed that state aid was growing at 2.5%, so we landed at, uh, 12,212,573 dollars. Unfortunately, on Friday, uh, we got the governor's draft budget numbers, and it came in below that. I wanna, wanna say it's around 169,000 less than what we had estimated. So I will be letting the finance committee know, um, that unfortunately we are, well, below what, um, kinda what we had projected. Local receipts, we estimated at 10,389,000, um, which is just above where we came in with the FY23 budget estimate. Um, the FY22 actual was around 12.6 million dollars for various reasons, including several large one-time revenue payments, um, as we've discussed. So just quickly, kind of where we ended up. We did increase over the FY23 budget in several areas that I noted here in red. So the motor vehicle and boat excise tax, we increased the budget amounts up to 4 million. Um, meals tax, we bumped that up to 240,000. The transportation fees include, um, an increase to the transportation capital fee that was previously voted by the Board to the full 80 dollars per permit effective January 1st of 2024. So that, um, revenue number includes the full amount of that, um, transportation capital fee there. Uh, we did bump up the ambulance fees slightly, and then also the fines and forfeiture for yours slightly.
So that fees, that just doesn't include ambulance fees, that's all different.
There's other, yeah, there's other, yeah, yeah. Um, so, on the expense side, um, for the municipal side, our expenses are increasing about 3.4% over FY23. Um, and we have included, or I included in the budget the following new initiatives. So increasing the health inspector to a full-time position from 19 to 35 hours. Uh, funding a full-time network administrator position to support the IT department. Um, that, that network administrator position exists on the compensation schedule and is a position that had been funded, uh, in previous years and just had not, um, had not been funded late, in the past probably 10, 10 or so years. Create and fund a new financial analyst position in the treasurer collector's office to, um, support increased online payments. Create and, um, fund a new part-time position in the building department to support zoning enforcement and ZBA permitting activities. And then increase one professional librarian position from 15 to 19 hours, still a part-time position. Uh, the position, the, the budget does not fund several new initiatives that were requested by departments, one of which being the deputy fire chief, a new assistant town planner, a new PT position in the DPW to support the Lynch School, which although I did not include in the FY24 budget, my recommendation is that would be included in the FY25 budget. Um, and then also increasing the community health program manager in the health department from 17 to 35 hours. Uh, moving forward on FY24 expenses, the education budget increased 4.17, um, over FY23. Um, the request does not include, um, a full-time funding for the school department's projected special education out of district tuition costs, or funding for the projected costs of transporting Lynch students to the Parker Swing Space. Um, and we can get into that, uh, request, uh, which would come forward as an ARPA request from the school department on the second item. Um, the school committee has committed to using, um, their remainder SRT2 funds, which is around 370, 325,000 to, to cover as much of the out-of-district tuition as possible in FY24, but this is a one-time solution, um, and these out-of-district costs will continue in future budget years. Um, on the vocational side, we estimated a budget increase of 5.4%, um, 5.54% based on historical averages. We'll have to do some work with the finance committee, um, during the, their budget process after we get some more enrollment informations from the vocational schools. For undistributed, um, this is probably the one really good, good news out of the, of the budget. So the FY23 budget, um, we had assumed, uh, an increase in health insurance of 3.8%, which was based on Harvard Pilgrim. At, prior, or right after the budget was approved, we made the switch, um, from Harvard Pilgrim to Maya Blue Cross Blue Shield, which resulted in significant savings in FY23. Uh, we're estimating in FY23, we're sa, probably saving somewhere around 900,000 dollars. Um, so that money will be a turnback at the end of FY23. Um, the Maya Blue Cross Blue Shield increase for FY24 is 5.6%, which is the Maya average. We had a commitment when we switched to Blue Cross Blue Shield that we would not go above the Maya average for our second year. Um, overall, as a result of the, the decrease, um, in the FY23 budget, our FY24 health insurance budget is projected to decrease 1.47% um, from FY23 to FY24. So, that's some good news. I think, um, that change that we made, um, was, does help in the long term in terms of our overall financial picture. I, I think this is, um, you know, kind of the warning we've gotten from our health insurance provider is that we should not expect, uh, you know, fi, 3% or 5% rate increases going forward, that we're probably headed into a period, um, you know, overall in the health insurance industry, we're seeing higher rate increases. So I think this is kind of a, a, we've had a couple of good years here that I don't, I think as we, as we go out into the future years, we should expect that we'll probably see higher numbers going forward. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that we're considering a switch from Delta Dental, who's our current dental insurance provider, to Blue Cross Blue Shield. If we did do that in FY23, it would give us, or sorry, for FY24, it would give us a one-time half percent reduction in our overall health insurance costs. So that's something that we're currently considering, but did not include it in the town manager's budget at this point. Uh, contributory retirement, um, that goes, went up the required 7.7 increase per PARAC. Our unfunded liability is scheduled to be fully paid off by FY29, uh, based on the most recent actuaries, actuarial study. The energy budget increased 4.43% over FY23. In part, um, we made some conservative budgeting, um, due to unknowns related to the Parker School modular classroom electricity usage. Uh, workers' compensation and the OPEC fund were both level funded at the 350,000 dollars. Um, our funded debt budget had two major things that I wanted to, to mention this evening. So the first is we will be permanently borrowing for the 5.5 million dollar transfer station project. As you may recall, it was a 6.5 million dollar project. We used a million dollars of free cash to fund a portion of it. As was voted by the Board in September of 2021, 100, the budget assumes 170,000 dollars comes from the staff, capital stabilization funds, and 400,000 dollars comes from the implementation of the transfer station capital fee to pay that annual debt service, which is estimated at 570,000 dollars. Um, well, we will also be renewing the ban for the Washington Swan Street property. Um, as was voted at Fall Town Meeting, we'll have a paydown of 1.22 million dollars in March of 2023. And then we'll have, we'll be issuing a new 12-month ban for the 4.05 million, which is the remaining, um, cost on, on that borrowing. Um, the ban interest in March 2024 is estimated at 138, just over 138,000 from the general fund. The remainder of that will be paid from the state ARPA earmark. That, we had a total of 150,000 state ARPA earmark, which we'll be paying for the ban interest in FY23, and then there'll be a little bit left over to put towards the ban interest in '24. Any questions on any of that? Um, so moving forward to financial projections. So, um, we had free cash certified last fall at 16.7 million, which, which put us in an operating reserve of, um, just over 16%. At Fall Town Meeting, we used, um, almost 1.7 million dollars of free cash, which dropped our operating reserve to just over 15%. Um, so, as we considered the, um, FY24 town manager's plan, we did put together a three-year model, um, projecting out where we would be. And so the things that come in as variables, particularly, um, for this year is the FY23 turnbacks, um, which we've talked a little bit about from the health insurance side. It's unknown from the municipal side the size of the turnbacks we may have. We'll, we'll have to have a conversation about what we wanna do with that turnback from the health insurance budget. Um, the question is whether we want to move a portion or all of that into the health insurance stabilization fund at Fall Town Meeting, knowing that we may have a few bumpy years ahead of us in terms of health insurance costs, or if we wanna allow all of that money to, to ma, be maintained as free cash. We did, as you may recall, transfer, uh, last fall, 275,000 dollars into the health insurance stabilization fund, which we had, we didn't use or not recommending to use as part of the FY24 budget. So, that's something that the Board will need to talk about and consider as we go forward into Fall Town Meeting. Um, and then, one of the other, the two other variables are how much free cash we expect to be using at Spring 23 Town Meeting, and then also excess revenues that we may have in FY23. Um, so you've seen me put this slide up before. This is, kinda shows the historical, uh, turnbacks dating back to FY12. Um, the, the ones circled in red are what I would consider the outliers. In FY17, we had, um, some budgeting issues with our, our funded debt, which kind of resulted in this anomaly, uh, turnback. And then FY20, 21, and, and really 22, to some extent, were very much impacted by COVID. Um, so if you take out those kind of outliers, the average annual turnback was, is around 1.44 million dollars in the, uh, in the other years. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about, cause I know we talked about the FY22 being a bit of an outlier. We had, we turned back about 2.1 million dollars in, um, from municipal departments and other departments. Um, so I just very quickly kind of ran through a summary of kind of what led to that, right? So some of it, um, is a result of staff vacancies. Some of it is a result of retirements and hires, um, where people come in at a lower salary. In FY22, we had a request for a legal budget, which we didn't end up needing because of the way the contract was, was structured with Anderson Craigers, so that was a, a turnback. The library has had significant turnbacks in FY22. I think in the last, uh, the, um, well, Nicole's here, you can, I think you've had almost 80% of your staff turnover in the past year. So, um, between the, the turnover and the time between filling vacancies, that, that's what's resulted in, um, some of those, save, or turnbacks in the, in the library. Similar in the public safety, police and fire, they had significant turnbacks because of retirements and other vacancies. Not because they're positions that aren't needed, they're, they're positions that are budgeted and positions that we do need to have in the, in the town. They just, you know, for various reasons, we're-
When you look out, do you see similar number of retirements by department?
Yeah, so I think in, in police, they do. They had, they had four retirements this year, and they have, um, a few people who are in the academy, but I think they're, they're gonna have to go another round to fully, fully, um, you know, bring up a full staff back on through the academy. So I do think they'll have, certainly in police, they will have some turnbacks. And if you look at, um, Stacy did send her comptroller's report through, through, um, January, so you can kinda get a flavor for where things are headed. Um, you know, DPW expenses are, are very much not, uh, you know, on the higher side, right? So I don't expect to have any turnbacks there, obviously, but some of the salaries are, um, police and fire a little bit on the lower side compared to where you would think they would be. So I just wanted to kinda, very quickly kinda go through, you know, the breakdown for FY22 so we can kind of understand where that was at the high number. So going forward in the FY24 budget, this is what we put in there for the estimated operating reserves. And the, the portion I highlighted in red is really the, the key piece that leads to a lot of the variabilities, right? The question is, how much free cash are we gonna use at Spring Town Meeting? For this analysis, we assumed 1.35 million dollars. And how much is gonna be turned back in FY23? And for this analysis, we assumed a million dollars. So that would put you at a operating reserve at the end of FY23 of 14.78%. Obviously, those are-
But this doesn't take into account any excess revenue then, right?
It doesn't.
So just turnback is-
Just turnback.
Okay.
Um, so in the budget book, I did put together a sensitivity analysis that, um, looks at prior year turnbacks. Uh, did a conservative middle and best case. It looks at revenue and also expenses, uh, projections. So, you know, kind of municipal departments, education, unallocated wages, energy and health insurance. So based on a, a couple of different scenarios where we might land. And that, this is the, um, the graph that shows, we're starting at that 14.78%, which is not, uh, is, is an estimate, right? Um, and then projects out the end of, this is the end of FY23, and because we're not using any free cash to balance the FY24 budget, um, that's not included in here. But going into the end of FY24, which is headed into FY25, this is where we would expect to be, um, somewhere in this range. And that assumes we'll be using free cash to balance the FY25 budget, and then so on for the years and the out-years. Um, so the, going back to the FY23 budget book, you can see, and this is basically the same graph, right? But a year different. So, at the end of FY22, we were projecting that we would be at 12.4% operating reserve. Um, and the FY, and then at the end of FY23, we were projecting we'd be somewhere between 8.3 and 10.4. We're actually at somewhere probably around 15%. And then at the end of FY24, the budget book is, the FY23 budget book estimated that we'd be, you know, falling off the curve below our operating reserve. And we're actually expected to be somewhere above our operating reserve, our current operating reserve policy. So the question is, what, we all wanna know, right, why is the difference? We've had, we've had a lot of these conversations, right? The first is, um, you know, the projected operating reserve at the end of FY22 was 12.4, and we was actually 16.1, as we just talked about, because we assumed a million dollars in turnbacks, and we actually had the, the 2.2.168 million. Um, we had unanticipated state and federal grant revenue that came in, um, generally related to COVID activities that helped to bolster our, um, our receipts. And, um, and then we also had conservative budgeting, because there was a lot of unknowns going into the FY22 budget cycle, which I wasn't part of that budget development, but there was unknowns related to where we were gonna be with COVID. So there, and we also had the, um, 1.2 million dollars in excess building permit fees from the two 40B projects. When you look out to the longer-term projections, obviously the health insurance costs being lower, um, in FY23 and FY24 have helped us, uh, overall in terms of our financial projections. And then also not using free cash to balance the budget in '24, using ARPA funds instead, so.
Just to be clear, like, going back to 10 years, we're always, we always project 2% less, around 2% that our reserves will be 2% less than it actually ends up being. So we always project very conservative. I mean, yeah, this year, we were off by double that, 4%. But, you know, it's expected that we're wrong, and it's expected that we're wrong on the, on the, wrongs on the, on the good side-
On the good side, yeah.
I mean, for example, when you look at the best case, that is, for best-case turnbacks, you have the average if you remove the best three years, right? So, to me, that's not best case, that's average, right? And worst case is lower than it's ever been, right? So that's like overly pessimistic worst case. And best case, what we're calling best case is really average, right? So, uh, you know, to me, the, the odds of going above best case and worst case should be the same, and I don't think that we're projecting that way.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, it makes, makes sense. I mean, and, and so part of it is, you know, what is our kind of real baseline, you know, when we look across? And, and what, what should be normal for us for turnbacks? And how do we, how do we allow for that, you know, and accommodate in our budget? Cause it's, you know, it's not helpful for us necessarily. When we get huge turnbacks and we're, um- When we get huge turnbacks, and we're, you know, some of them, we probably can anticipate a little bit in the budget.
So it's a good problem to have.
Well, not, not if it's, it's not really accurate, you know, depiction of, you know, our revenue.
Well, I mean, it's not an exact science, I think that's what that's trying to get at here, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, it's not just revenue, right? Like, the, the one-time forty B revenues, that's harder to protect, because we don't know in December and January and February, when a, when a developer may come in and apply for a building permit rate. So that's harder to predict. And, and I think the, my point was with, with this is that, from the turnback side, everything that, from a staff position perspective, everything that was turned back is a position that's budgeted and exists in the budget and should exist in the budget. And it, it's not that we've, we've, we're budgeting for positions that don't exist, right? That there are reasons behind why, why there are savings here.
So I don't have an issue with the worst-case scenario. I know it's, I have an issue with calling it conservative, I think it should be called overly pessimistic, but, well, because it's never happened, right? It hasn't happened in fifteen years, right?
And it also means that all of those bad things will happen at once.
All those bad things will happen at once, right? And we will not get a new development pulling permits, right? Because we know there will be, we don't know when, so we can't plan for when it will happen, but, you know, for that to happen for three years in a row, that's just
Right. I mean, to, to look at that is, if that happens one year in a row, one, one, for one year, then there's gonna be some course correction to validate it. And so when we have that three-year graph that puts us in this red line going in, into the negative in three years' time, I mean, conceivably, no one's gonna let that happen, or else we've reached a very bad management.
So that's my, kind of the point that I'm building to you, right? That these are not, this is not like a foregone conclusion that we're gonna end up at negative four point three, four percent at the end of FY twenty-six, because that's, the whole point of this is for us to say, what can we do, right? And we will, like, you know, can we look at savings in health insurance, which is what we did last year? What are we doing to course correct, right? And so this is, it's a planning tool, as opposed to like a pure projection, right?
It just feels like it creates a little bit of a false narrative if we're, if it's, if that, if, if, you know, if that, that decline is not a realistic one, you know, for us.
Yeah, I think it would be more useful if the best case was actually a best, like, a best case, like if everything went right. And then, well, but the, the issue is, then what we would see is, it would be like this, right? And when we get to end of FY twenty-five, it would be anywhere between four percent and thirty percent.
Right.
But that would give us the correct picture, that is very hard to plan three years ahead, right? I don't think this gives the right picture, that it, that it might be twenty-five percent in two years. Right, because we just did go up, you know, four, five percent in one year, and if we have another development come in, I mean, we have some developments that are stuck in court right now, that there might be sixty, you know, or a hundred, or a hundred and fifty new units that will pull building permits in the next couple of years. And that's what happened with the forty Bs, and that's how we ended up with an extra five point eight million dollars that wasn't planned last year, right? So best case, we, I think it would show better if it shows, two years from now, we have no idea, we don't know if it will be between four and thirty percent, because that's the reality.
So based on some comments I got from Mariano, I went back, and I think rightly so, to his point, I adjusted the starting point to where we actually are as of Fall Town Meeting, so it's the fifteen point zero three. And then for the end of FY twenty-three, I did some options here based on the amount of free cash we use at Fall Town Meeting, and then the range of FY twenty-three turnbacks. So obviously, the best case is, could, could be better, right? But I think it, it's not gonna substantially change, like, we're in, we're in this range. And then you can see where that puts us in the out years, right? So
Yeah, I mean, I think for FY twenty-three, that's predefined, but I think for FY twenty-five, it should be about twenty percent. But I don't think we can say that it will drop, I, I mean, it hasn't, in the last, since twenty fourteen, it's only dropped once, our reserves. It has gone up every single other year.
Oh, we had an override there in the middle.
Yeah, but even, even before the override, our reserves went up every year except for one. And that was with using nine hundred thousand dollars from free cash for the next year's operating budget, right? Nine hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, one point two million.
And we should, when we, you know, have, you know, large building permit fees that come in from, you know, a forty B, it's different than coming in from, you know, residential housing, right? We, we know that there's going to be a budget impact with those building, you know, permits, you know, hit in coming years because of schools and certainly increases in a percentage of special education funding and things like that. So it's, it seems like it's, you know, money that comes in the door, but there is gonna be a, a, a budget impact
Service impact.
Service impact soon, right? So it's, when we receive that, it's almost like we should have a, a conversation about putting some of it into the Special Education Reserve Fund, or something like that to, or towards the schools to set aside for future planning.
So at the last meeting, we had talked about the possibility of using some free cash at Spring Town Meeting to put towards capital. So I just, I took this scenario and I ran it with taking two million, adding, so basically to this Spring Town Meeting, free cash uses, I basically just added two million dollars. So this is where it would drop us, right? So for FY twenty-three, we're still obviously well above the operating reserve policy, and then, you know, as we go out into FY twenty-four, so this end of FY twenty-four assumes how much free cash we would need to balance the budget for FY twenty-five. So it appears that we could get through FY twenty-five while maintaining our current operating reserve policy.
But to Mariano's point, even if we give two million to capital, that number, you know, the best-case scenario could be even higher.
Could be higher. I mean, that too, that too, the free cash comes from turnbacks, right? So all that money is, is from turnbacks and excess revenue.
Right. The big question is what we do with that nine hundred thousand or so dollars that we have from the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, because that will, you know, if we had a million dollars in turnbacks plus the nine hundred thousand from health insurance, and that's a very large number. I think our recommendation is that we put a big chunk of that into the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund as a little bit of an insurance policy, no pun intended, for future, for future years, just not knowing where we're gonna be.
Yeah, I think that's why we created it. It was part of the process last year, we knew that we were gonna be doing a, a change, and we see that there are short-term gains, but then the market just delivers those increases, and that forces us into plan changes, which don't work out for, you know, our municipal employees. So I think that that's, again, it's still not fun money, right? It's still, you know, something that's needs to be set aside for a, a future budget impact that's right on the corner.
Yeah, I think when you, if you set out with the intent, if we go into a stabilization fund, and then you divert to something else, the next time you go before Town Meeting, your word's really worthless. And I, I want to avoid that.
Yeah. So just to be clear, it, it will close to free cash at the end of the fiscal year, and then at Fall Town Meeting, we'll have to appropriate. So we'll have, when we get the free cash certification from DOR, it will include that money, and then we'll just, just know, like, from a, you know, mental accounting position that it's passing through on its way out, yeah.
And, and, you know, we'll, we'll have to, you know, talk about maybe a, a policy around what percentage we're gonna have in there, because, you know, it's essentially telegraphs to the insurance companies that we're planning for a large increase, right? And I don't know if we want to be doing that either, I don't, I don't know if we, which way we win, but
So this is, we've talked a lot about this already, but just the conclusions, right? That the, it's a model, it's, it's a, it's a projection, it's a planning tool, it's not like this is where we're gonna be in three years for sure, right? Obviously, as we just talked about, as you get further out in time, that range of where we end up is, is less certain. And we should be using it to guide our future decisions about where we want to go and, and our priorities for the town. Obviously, COVID led to a lot of uncertainties in the expense and revenue projections, which hopefully, we're kind of settling down a little bit, and that we'll have a little bit more consistency. I think just that, we've talked a little bit about the Select Board's operating reserve policy in terms of, you know, the current policy has the six to, six to ten percent range, and whether we want to bump that up to eight to fourteen, or, or something in that range. And then also, the current policy talks about limiting the amount of free cash used to balance the operating budget to non-recurring expenditures, so that's something, just to kind of guide the conversation for future years. I think overall, the budget model predicts either way that we look at it, that we'll be able to balance the FY twenty-four, five budget using free cash without dipping below that six percent minimum. FY twenty-six projection is obviously less certain, and FY twenty-six override in early twenty-five would come right on the heels of a potential CPA vote in November of twenty twenty-four. So I think it's just important, as we, you know, look towards our long-term planning, how we, how we lay out those potential overrides that we may have going to the voters. So that's really all I had for the budget.
But do you mind going back a slide? So in terms of, you know, if we were to shift the operating reserves policy to eight to twelve percent, you know, it's looking at by the end of FY twenty-five, we're at risk of being outside, below that, you know, possibly, even at eight percent. So what would be the in terms of, in terms of, like, modeling this, if we're, if we're then looking at, we're gonna dip below the, the policy, what is our approach to balancing the budget at that point?
So I think that's where we, the override conversation comes into play, right? So if we are, you know, we've kind of been put on notice or given a little bit of wake-up call from Moody's, that, you know, we need to maybe think about, kind of work, think about this as part of our long-term projection, and, and that's part of the picture, right? Do we wanna, do we, if we maintain the six percent, then this is the, this is the basement that we don't want to go below. If we want to bump it up to eight percent, then that is the new basement, and we have to kind of think about that as we get into those out years and as we plan an override, right? So to me, any, any kind of operating reserve policy goes hand in hand with what our override timeline is.
Just seems like then that would be antithetical to our goal, if we're using, you know, free cash, we're just accelerating, you know, the, the operating override based on these numbers, and making it harder for us to, I mean, I think that if we're gonna increase our operating reserves, you know, probably do it incrementally, right? Probably maybe, you know, one percent up a year, half a percent, and I think Moody's would be happy if we were making that effort. It's not, they, I don't think they expect us to be doing it overnight.
Right, and I think it goes to this, kind of this point, in the current policy is, you know, what we're, what you want to use free cash for, right? Whether it's to help balance the budget on an annual basis, or to try to use it just for these non-recurring expenditures.
So I know that's the written policy, but we never followed it before, right? I mean, until the override, we used free cash to balance the budget, anywhere from five hundred, the lowest was five hundred and seventy thousand in FY fifteen and FY seventeen, all the way up to one point two million in FY twelve. The year that I did the budget book as Chair of Income, it was nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Yeah, so, I mean, that might have been, that might be the written policy, but it's never been the practice to, to do that.
To, to not, to not use free cash to balance
To not use free cash to balance the budget, because we expect that there will be reversions, right? And reversions are part of the previous year's operating budget, right? The reversions are recurring, right?
So that, that's why it seems, I, I mean, I get the logic behind using the reversions for, you know, non-recurring expenses, right? So you're not creating a, a deeper structural deficit, but it also seems like it's, it is operating money when it comes in reversions, and we're using it to balance the budget next year, it's still operating, you know, except it seems like it's in the same lane, and then we're kind of, if we use it for capital, we're, we're washing it through the operating budget, you know?
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, overall, I think the, the rating agencies look poorly on when you're using, you know, a significant amount of money every year to balance your budget, because that means, like, for, in a long-term model, right? Like, yes, at some point, you, you can keep using those turnbacks, but at some point, there's, that is gonna grow wider.
Your deficit will grow wider than your turnbacks, and I understand.
It's not a
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and then you need an override, right?
And then you need an override, right? And that's, I mean, that's kind of the whole point, right, is that
Yeah, but then we're, we're just, we're accelerating that override for using the turnbacks for, you know, non-operating funds in future years, you know, that's, that's the only problem. So if we go for an operating override, and then, you know, we have all these turnbacks, and then that turns, it, it, a lot of that becomes a, a capital override, right? So that we haven't really, you know, explained, right? So if the, if the, we're using, say we use two million dollars of reverted capital funds, I mean, reverted operating funds, right? It's, we're kind of turning it into capital.
Right. I mean, the question is, we have a policy of six to ten percent, right? And maybe it needs to be higher, but whatever, it's six to ten percent. We've built it up to sixteen percent, right? And so the question is, well, do we call for an override when we're at fourteen percent? Then why do, why is the policy six to ten percent for calling for an override when it's at fourteen percent? Because we're saying, well, we don't want to use those reserves for the operating budget, because, you know, that's not our policy. And it's like, well, right? I mean, Arlington does it differently, right? It's like they go up in reserves, and then they start coming down, and they build that deficit, and then when it gets to that policy level, right? Let's say ten percent, that, it's easy to justify, look, our reserves are getting here, we need an override. Right, and so that's, I mean, I don't know, if Moody's doesn't see it that way, but, but they used to see it that way. I know they changed this year, but they used to understand how Proposition Two and a Half works in Massachusetts, every town has to do it this way.
Okay. So with that, we have Roger here from Capital Planning. This may be a good time for you to come up, talk about capital planning, the exercise you engaged in.
Or maybe it isn't, right? I, yeah, snag that. I, I assume everybody got the memo that I forwarded in, in the packet. I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time on, on that memo, per se, I want to give you some visuals about what we're talking about from the start, make sure that we're all on the same page. Our tasking was very quickly that you were internally having a conversation about perhaps allocating some additional funds to capital projects at Spring Town Meeting. We were asked, tasked to come up with a list of projects that might fit the criteria of health and safety. That part's very easy, because everything that we do basically impacts health and safety on the capital side, and was shovel-ready, or as shovel-ready as possible. That's a hard problem for us, because most of the projects that are of significant size require engineering beforehand. We don't do the engineering work until we have a source of funds available for completing the construction of those projects afterwards, so consequently, we don't have a whole bunch of things just waiting around. That being said, we came up with a list of five projects that we think are, are good projects, and wanted to present to you, and here they are. First one was Lincoln Flatwork, which has been around for a while. We have the majority of the engineering work done on that. If you've walked over to Lincoln and looked around, the whole front area, these little, I guess they're called cheek walls, have suffered freeze thaw, and the handrails are falling apart. And perhaps the biggest problem is, when all of this work was done, most of these things were not properly placed on good, solid substrate. They're all sitting on sort of loam, or if we're lucky, sand. And so things are moving and shifting, and they've sunk at different levels, and they create trip hazards. This is a, a good example here. On this one over here, this sums up three different problems. You can see at this, there's nothing underneath that pad there, that concrete pad, and it is sunk down below the level of the tread here. And over years, it's created a trip hazard between the difference between the pad and the tread, and DPW's gone in and smoothed things out with, with mortar to try and prevent that, and that occurs repeatedly between the different pads. You can see over here, where the pads have sunk, the upper level, that, that's, that's flashing to divert waterway, but you can see that area right there, that's how much the pad has sunk down from where it originally started out, and that's separated out there away from the school, and sometimes the pads point toward the school, so as water points towards the school instead of drifting away. So there's a, a, a large area that needs to be redone, and this is probably the largest, I mean, the most advanced in terms of engineering work that we have. Estimates are between one point four and one point eight million dollars to redo all of that concrete work. And we'd be reducing the scope of that, we'd be taking off the stairs that run up in front, because in the winter, they can't be be taking off the stairs that run up in front because in the winter, they can't be utilized anyway. They, they, they close them down and, and they're a maintenance hazard, maintenance nightmare right now. So it would be reducing the amount of concrete as well as repairing that concrete in that area.
So Roger, I went to Chris's video on YouTube.
Yes, the, down at the bottom there, yes.
And it, it talks about changing the walkway, eliminating part of it. And so it, and creating a wall for a teaching area potentially for outside. So it seemed to me like this was more than just some remediation work. I'm wondering, do you have it split up between what the actual remediation work is and then the other design elements that the school would like to implement? Cause at reference, going back to the original intent of the entrance of the school. And I'm like, okay, what's going on here? It, it just see, I just.
I asked the exact same question. I, the, the response that I got was that there was not a good logical break in, in these, in this project to separate out parts that I guess you would call purely safety work versus the, the scope of taking off the front walkways and things like that. That's safety work as well.
But the, yes, I mean, well, I won't debate it, but it just seems like this was a, a case of mission creep where we started with remediating some issues which are obvious as I walk by there all the time. And then all of a sudden we had, well, since we had the contractor here, we'll do this, this and this. And I don't know that that's really part of what capital does or what we expect capital to do, which was to, you know, do, do extensive site work at Lincoln to, to create a, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just trying, I, I just can't get my mind around what's the real cost here for the, for the things that we care about most, which is making a safe and secure environment for the students and the, and the teachers.
Yes. I'll say, I'll say that this is, we're running into a little bit of a problem here because the engineering work isn't complete here. And so this hasn't even really been thoroughly vetted at this point.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that, that was my experience too. I watched the video that Chris, it was, it was really helpful as well to, to watch that. But it did, Mission Creep was my first, you know, perspective on it because I remember coming, this coming through capital a few years ago and the schools talking about it and it was at, it was just repairing that walkway. It wasn't revisioning the entrance to the Lincoln School, which is what it's now become. So it was, I think the price on it was eight hundred. Now we've doubled it because we're, we're creating a whole new entrance. And when we're looking at health and safety priorities, the new entrance is cool. I, I just, I don't know if that's something that we would need to be accelerating a project and using free cash for, right? So especially when we've got roofs that are, you know, on schools that need to be done. That's the only thing is maximizing our, our.
Financier dollars, right?
Yeah. Then let me go to door number two.
Rodney, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Of the one point four to one point eight, how much of that is engineering that is remaining to be done?
Uh, I think we've already paid for the, we've already got the engineering funds in.
Oh, you do? Okay. It's just not, it's just not.
The reason that, the reason that we're at the delta there is, well, there's a debate within the project manager and schools about how, you know, how much margin of contingency there should be. Thank you.
So yeah, when, when we, you know, we're looking at this a few years ago, we put it forward for the engineering, you know?
Yes.
We always have this policy of, you know, we don't fund the design engineering unless we can see that we've already, you know, set aside or at least we kind of earmarked the construction dollars, right? So we're not sitting with just a bunch of plans. So it seemed like when we, when we did that, we, we had earmarked the, something in the eight hundred thousand range, not in the one point six range.
Something that we could, something that we could attack.
Right. Something that we could attack. So it seems like we're, we're at, we're, we're adding quite a bit here. So I don't know, is it, is the complete engineering, is that for just the initial project or is that for the expanded project?
That's for the full project.
That's for the, the expanded project. If I'm full, I call it expanded.
Yeah.
But yeah.
But do you know how much, like, when could the plans be ready if we were?
I, the information that I get is this, that we could be probably ready to go in the summer, you know, that we're that close.
But we were ready through the capital process to fund this anyway, right? Cause we did, we funded design and engineering.
Correct.
So we, so we did our earmark that money out of the stabilization fund.
We, we earmark, we earmarked it at the lower number for sure.
Right.
Which was like eight hundred thousand.
Eight to one.
That's what the schools had recommended.
Yes. Correct.
That was their policy recommendation.
Library windows. This is, uh, this is kind of embarrassing, quite honestly. These appear to be, the, these are the exteriors. There are interior storms that are actually performing the function of providing wind and, and rain protection. As you can see, you've got paint, you've got, well, the, the window structures are two by three, two by four, two by five. Then there's a big base structure. You can see on the top right there where we have glass, it's just broken out and falling out. You can see the corroded nature of the iron frames, things like that. I walked around, I wasn't really that familiar with how bad it was. I would guess that the window frames, the structures themselves, the panes that are two by four, between a quarter to a third of them have a broken pane, a broken light in it or a cracked light or something.
Is there anything sealing the envelope of the building?
Yes, the interior storm.
Oh.
Just the interior storm. It's, this is a problem. This is, this is a problem. It does have, you know, the interior storms that, you know, during the summertime, we're told that condensation forms on the interior storm between the, the outside windows and the interior storm. And obviously, wind and rain can get through there and build up inside. So.
Was the estimate for engineering eighty thousand?
Uh, we don't, uh, I think that's right. I think that was right. I think that was right. But I mean, I just, you know, DPW and, and past experience indicates this would be a million dollar project.
Are there any state grants, right? I mean, I assume that we'll be improving the, you know, efficiency of building, right?
Yes.
You know, besides leaving them open, we couldn't be, you know, making it worse, right?
Yeah. I can't answer that off the top of my head, but we'll find that out.
Yeah.
Certainly lower our, our energy bills.
Right. Yeah. That is what I mean. So there's got to be something there. And I imagine that these windows are really expensive to replace if we have to be consistent with the, you know, historical integrity of.
I'm certain that that will be involved. I'm certain that that will be involved. But you can't get, no matter what we do, it's going to be an improvement.
Right.
No matter what we do, it's going to be improvement on that.
Yeah.
And so this led to a project that had not been on our radar also. And these are the playscape surrounding Ambrose and VO. This, this is the Ambrose playscape and it's got rubberized surface and hardscape as well that need to be replaced. We've had three different contractors in to take a look at it. Two of them said, don't waste your money on repairing it. It needs to be replaced. Third one said, well, hey, if you want to pay me, you know, I'll, I'll repair it. But that, that just, that's throwing good money after bad.
And how long has that been there? I mean, for?
Uh, it's been there long enough that the Parents Association started raising funds to try and get it done themselves. So this is original to, you know, the eighteen years. It's been bad.
That's, you know, beyond the useful life or something like that, right?
Yes. Yes. We need to take it up. We need to replace it. And then this is, this is at VO. This, you can almost see with the little feet hitting the, the surfaces as the swing goes by. This is isolated spots where we've lost some of the surface rubberization and we need to go through and just repair that before water infiltrates underneath it and seeps along further. This is a minor thing that we would, we would probably normally pick up from the maintenance repair fund. But if we do it at the same time, DPW could roll the two parts together and, and get a better price. So we'd recommend putting both Ambrose and VO together in, in a package. And this is a bit over a hundred thousand dollars for the, for the two.
And what would, would repair be for, for that? Do you think what would cost to repair that?
This, I think our guess was around twenty thousand dollars. Finally, the last two things are roof systems. And Ambrose Roof has been identified by the DPW as their most likely suspect that they want to go after first. Again, eighteen years old. As you know, Full Town Meeting funded schematic design review for, for roofs, for Ambrose, for Town Hall, for the library and for McCall. And we included money in the Ambrose package to look at relocation of these roof penetrations so that we could get a nice big surface area where we'd be able to install some PV arrays, photovoltaic arrays. After that, the roof was engineered to support ballasted arrays, but we just can't get enough contiguous space to do anything meaningful. So this would be the number one, uh, this would be the number one roof that, that we would propose. Number of one point three million was thrown around for a while, but we'll have a better answer to that. Unfortunately, the, the initial investigation work was not, has not been completed yet, but we'll have a, a better answer for that before Springtown Meeting for sure.
So Roger, for the, the hundred and fifty that was appropriated at Fall Town Meeting is the first step. And then you would have in, engineering for each of those rooms individually.
Yes.
And then construction. So there's, we're, we're at step one of a three step process.
The first step, the first step tells us how bad is it? And then we would have to have individual engineering and we'd pick out the worst roof. And again, if we look at the next roof, which is McCall, it might flip flop. If we, if we get through this first phase of investigation and we find out that McCall is actually in worse shape than in, than Ambrose, we might have to go to McCall first and, and, and save up that way. Now, we're not looking at the new, at the new sections. These are, you know, th- those are all fine, but we're definitely looking at the sections over the auditorium and the gymnasium and the center sections. I'm not sure about the library. I think it's also included in that as well. But it's, it's been on our radar screen for some time and that's potentially more than two million dollars worth of work.
Looks like it. Yeah.
It's a big roof.
Bunch of roofs. I think it's.
Lot of different roofs.
A lot of different roofs.
Was there anything that we've seen, you know, that has accelerated deterioration of any of these roofs in particular as we're looking to, you know, build, you know, Lynch or anything like that, that, anything noticeable? I mean, I know it's probably, you know, twenty years is the useful life of.
Expected.
Twenty, thirty years.
Yeah. Yeah. The, I, I can't answer that. I, I know that.
I'm curious. I'm not looking for an answer.
I know that Ambrose DPW's detected where the roofing material has separated away from the underlying structure indicating that there is some water getting in there. And that's again, sort of what this inspection phase is supposed to tell us. They get up there with an IR gun and take a look and see where, where real problems are. But beyond that, we also, coming down the pipe, I'll just pure capital hat, we've got this building and we've got that building, slate roofs that are, that are coming up and we'll have more information on those soon. Those are the, those are the five projects we came up with. I would be remiss if I didn't say to you, this is out of the ordinary for us to do business this way. We're four months from the start of our next capital cycle. And while we'll take any money you'll give us in any conditions that you, you'll, you'll give us, by far, what the committee would prefer that you consider is, is that you say, we're going to put some money into capital and that you put it into capital and let it go through the normal capital process so that we know that we're applying it to the highest priority projects. These are all good projects. Every one of them is a good project. But we'd like to beat it up, but appreciate any funding that you can move towards capital.
Part, part of the conversation started in late September, early fall, when we were really kind of bracing for the likelihood of a bond rating downgrade. And we said, you know, we have all of these projects and, you know, borrowing in the future is going to cost us more. So these projects with the market and how much construction costs are increasing and interest rate increasing, using, you know, two million dollars or using, you know, some free cash is going to save us in the long term, right? So I, 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 I think that conditions have changed, you know, a little bit where we've, you know, maintained our triple A bond rating and, you know, construction costs have leveled down in certain parts of the market. And so, you know, I, I, you know, I, I don't, you know, for certain, for certain projects, I don't know if it's the, the urgency is, is what we maybe thought when we were looking at this back in September from my perspective. So that was the, that was the conversation around kind of hurrying up and using as many, much of our resources as possible to kind of, you know, get rid of some of, some of these capital projects that've been hanging around.
So you think these costs are going to go down? I mean, I don't see anything stabilizing. I mean, construction costs continue to go up.
Yeah. It's not really what we've heard with the Lynch project, right? I mean, I think that some costs in the, the market have, have come down. And I, and I, I think that we saw just a vertical increase. And so that was fair. And the combination of the potential of our interest rate increases through the bond rating downgrade, I think that there was a such a sense of urgency that, you know, I personally think, you know, is, is not worth us necessarily accelerating an operating override when we've got, you know, ARPA funding and we've been doing, you know, quite a bit of capital investment independent of the stabilization funds, right? So not, not necessarily everything that, that we do for capital comes out of the stabilization, stabilization funds, right? So we've been, so we've, we've, we've been doing a lot of that work.
I've never seen a project come down in price.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm not going to say it's going to come down in price, but the acceleration in the market that we saw, you know, in, in the middle of the pandemic, I think it's cooled, you know, in the market for construction. So at, at least that's what, you know, we, we heard on the Lynch side as well. So.
So taking out the Lincoln Flatwork on this list, you're looking at four point three million dollars worth of projects approximately. And those are, those are guests.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. And that doesn't include what's on, in the capital queue this year.
That's correct.
Other capital projects that you have. These are just health and safety projects. We're talking about roofs. We're talking about windows, building envelope projects that would, you know, prevent catastrophic failure.
Correct.
So I guess where I sit, you know, and at twenty five minutes ago, you know, we were talking, we were looking at graphs and, and saying, you know, you know, our, our financial situation is better than we, every year than we anticipate because of turnbacks and items such as that and reversions. Why, why wouldn't we tell capital at this point, you know, when you go through this capital cycle, you have an extra two million dollars to, to get some of these repairs underway and, and done?
I just don't know how it's extra, right? I mean, so it's, you know, it's, it's revenue. We've, you know, kind of over, over projected and we've had, you know, operating revenue that is now turned into.
So Mike, let me ask you, what do you think is the biggest financial crisis for the, that the town faces?
I think it's unfair to necessarily call something a crisis. I would say.
Okay. Financial problem.
Uh, special education. Absolutely. That's our, that's our number one crisis that I would categorize as a crisis. You know, I, I don't think that there's any comparable community that has invested in capital in the past ten or fifteen years like we have. Certainly stabilization funds hasn't, you know, haven't come, you know, it hasn't all come from there, right? We've done, you know, we're just invested in a new school building. We've done, you know, a high school building. We've done a lot of flood mitigation work. We've done two new turf fields, right? We've done a lot. When you look at the list, it's a lot of capital work that we've asked. When we look at water and sewer, the transfer station project, these are all increases that are kind of coming from different directions. So all the money that we're getting for residents for these projects doesn't necessarily come through the, the stabilization funds, but we're doing a lot of capital work. I mean, so I'm not saying that we don't have more to do. Certainly we, I would say prioritizing the, the roofs and the schools is the number one, you know, number one issue for us. So that, that I've seen, this is what Pete told us when he came here in the fall, when we started this conversation, that he, there are some of the roofs that he wouldn't even walk on because they're so dangerous. So that, that to me, I would say we should prioritize.
So, so the number one capital problem, the number one problem financially I see of the town is something we can't control and that's our capital expenditures. We can't control how much it costs to buy, you know, an HVAC compressor or what it costs to fix a roof or fix windows. Those are outside market factors that we can't control. When you talk about special education, you talk about the operating budget, we have some control over that, right? If our special education costs accelerate, what we can do is maybe we look at, you know, how we, you know, look at the programming that we offer. Maybe we offer more in, in district programming. Maybe we, you know, change our philosophy in certain areas, you know, to, to, to better service kids. So we have some say in that. And I'm not saying we have a perfect solution. You're always going to have L placements, but you know, we have a little control of that. Same thing with operating. You know, with operating, we can cut costs. We can get creative. We can shift things around. But with capital, we lose all control. We're at the mercy of the market and we've benefited the last twenty years of, you know, of no inflation, peacetime, easy to get. of no inflation, peacetime, easy to get materials from a global market. No one here has a crystal ball of what can happen. So my thing is, we can't let these things fester over years, over years, over years. And we need to start picking these off. And not only do we need to start picking them off, we can't put Band-Aids on things. A lot of times in this town, we put Band-Aids on projects and, and for good reason. Um, but, you know, if, if we invest in doing these projects correctly, um, you know, I think we'll save in the long run. And to me, capital is our, is our biggest financial issue. And I can appreciate what you're saying about special education costs, you know, that they are, that they're going up and up and up. Um, but I think, you know, we could, we could, we could have control, uh, in some respects with that as well. Uh, whereas capital, we have no control. I mean, we don't, we don't build this stuff. We don't build it internally. We don't build windows. Unless we're going to change that philosophy, then I don't see how that's not our biggest issue. I'm not sure what others think, but, um, you know, to me, that's our, our biggest financial problem. And so to me, if we have extra funds and, and it is revenue, if we have that available and we can say to the capital committee, "Look, you're going into this cycle and we're going to give you, uh, you know, we're going to make, uh, available to you an extra $2 million this round. Go do your job." And then you come back to finance, to, to town meeting and say, "This is what we would like to do with the extra money." Um, you know, I think that's, that's money well spent and worthwhile process. Just looking at this list, we have four projects that are 4.3 million dollars. I bet if he comes in next year, they're, they're 5 million.
They will be.
But that's part of the process, right? I mean, our, uh, the capital planning process isn't to just zero out all your capital projects. It's the prioritization, right? And so some of it is Band-Aids, right? I mean, that's what every community does. Um, sometimes you're, um, you know, instead of paving a road, you're filling, I mean, if you ever dream of my road, right? So, um, you know, you're, you're filling potholes instead of, you know, digging everything up. You have limited resources and you've got to prioritize. So, um, and, uh, you know, I don't want to use special education as the, um, you know, currency here, um, because that's, that's something that, um, you know, that, that we can't cut, we can't make a, a decision on through the operating budget, right? I mean, our operating budget renounceee has been, um, has been growing on the municipal side, right? So, um, so we can't cut there. But I think we can, we can manage. I know, you know, I floated the idea before. I know it makes that uncomfortable, but, you know, um, if we talk to town meeting and say, "Hey, you know, we've got, um, this $400,000 operating override that we put through the traffic, let's use, um, 3 million of, uh, ARPA funds, pay that off, use that, um, to that $400,000 for the roofs. We can get a lot more in borrowing over a period of 30 years for the roofs than we could borrow for the traffic over this, uh, a fifteen-year period, right? It doubles our amount, right? And I think town meeting would understand if strategically we were making decisions like that to fund roofs projects, to fund, um, to fund more, right? To make that money, um, go further, right? So.
Except that we spent months telling the voters of the community that this $400,000 was going to this one project. I mean, I don't know how you would ever go back to the voters, you know, and expect them to trust you and, and say, you know, are they going to pull a bait and switch on me again? And, and you might have good reason to do it. The math might work out that way, but it's not. I mean, that's just, I can't, I couldn't imagine doing that, even if it was the math worked out in our favor. I mean, I just.
But you just said the capital is our biggest need, right? And so, I mean, and health and safety is our biggest need. The roofs are, are our biggest need. We can bond those out for a longer period of time. And we weren't planning on using ARPA, you know, for the traffic stuff, but we could. I think that's, that's showing good faith on our part, right? If we're using, uh, you know, ARPA funds for the traffic work, um, and, uh, because otherwise, uh, we don't get a lot of leverage from it when we're bonding out over, uh, a short period of time, just fifteen years. So.
And we could do a roof project with ARPA money.
Right, but the benefit with a roof project is you can bond it over a longer period of time. So your debt service is, is spread out. So you can do two roofs instead of one roof with the same amount of money as the.
Right now.
But we're borrowing, but borrowing more money. You know, part of the problem is we, we borrow, borrow, borrow. I mean.
But, but my point is when you, when you're borrowing, you're just using that money that just you had identified for this purpose. When we, the reason that we came up with that number, um, of 400,000, um, was the 280 for debt service on the 3 million for the traffic, uh, and then we figured 100 plus for debt service on one of the roofs. So the, the, that's how we came up with the, the, right?
Four hundred.
The 400, right? So it, everybody said, "Oh, you guys picked that out of the air." We didn't. Pete was here. He said, "The roofs are terrible. I won't walk on one of them." Um, we said, "Well, we need to talk to the, to the voters about, um, doing the traffic work and doing the roof." So that $400,000, part of it.
It was traffic and one roof.
And one roof, right. So, um, so it's not, it's not far off. And if town meeting says no, I just expect, I think, I think voters and, and residents expect us to be strategic and be creative.
I think they expect us to tell the truth.
Yeah.
We go out to the voters and say, "This is what the override is about." They expect you to, to follow through on it. We, you know, give them our word.
Yeah.
And that's what it is.
But we are getting it done. I think what the voters want, I know certainly I've heard from the Lynch community is, um, they want to see the traffic work done. And, um, if we're using ARPA money or we're using, you know, I, I, I just don't see that it's, it's different if we're getting the project done that we told them we were going to get done. So.
I, I, I mean, I just disagree with you.
Yeah.
I just fundamentally disagree.
I, I would point out that the problem with the building stabilization fund in particular started when, immediately after it was established. It is still paying more than 50% of its funds towards debt that we took on 20 years ago. We got ourselves into a lot of trouble taking on a lot of debt, saying, "Look, we can just bond everything out for a long time." And now, you know, fifteen years later.
But that's why we chose to do an operating, you know, override instead of a debt exclusion override for, you know, the traffic work is because we knew, number one, we had another roof to do and we knew that at the end of that fifteen years of debt service, we would need that money in the, in the stabilization fund anyway. So it needed to be there continuously, right? So that was the.
I understand. I understand. We're gonna have to do all four of those roofs before fifteen years from now, though.
Right, but it, but in fifteen years, we'll have to keep doing other roofs.
Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I agree.
Right? I mean, that's, that's why it's an operating override and not a debt exclusion.
And part of the process here is also looking at, you know, the software that we have, the VFA, the software that we have and predicting out, you know, what, you know, when we'll, we'll have to make certain capital repairs. Uh, and I think, um, you know, the finance committee has been big on this and I think it's, they're right about it. Uh, and I think you, you, we're gonna have some type of presentation at some point in the near future about the VFA software. You know, there's going to be probably a one-time expense that we'll, we'll need to upgrade that software and then, you know, maintenance costs every year to make sure it's up to date. And then, you know, every, you know, so many years, we'll have to, you know, have a, another, um, you know, spend, it's, you know, significant resources to upgrade it as well. But it will keep all that information updated so that we're better able to p- project long out, you know, when roofs will be done, when windows need to be done and certain, certain things. So, I mean, I think that's part of this process, right, is to, you know, invest in that technology that we have available to do that. But at the same time, you know, we're, to me, we're at the point where, you know, we have two options. We can start picking off these projects, you know, or we can just wait and, you know, costs will go up. And to me, we have, you know, some, some excess revenue. Let's give capital, you know, s- some significant funds to, to start whittling down this list. By the way, I don't think you make, you don't make a huge dent in this list, but you.
To me, the question is, does this board want to put the town into a trajectory for an operating override in spring of 2024? Or spring of 2026? Right?
Spring of 2025.
Twenty-six. If we don't put the 2 million to capital, we can get to spring of 2026, to March of 2026.
So you're telling me for F, you think we could get to FY27 without an override?
Yes, to the end of FY26 without an over, or, well, no, with the override being in March of 2026.
Yeah.
Which would mean that override is needed for FY27.
For.
For the FY27 budget.
In a, in a.
In an average.
Yeah, but also.
With, with, on the current.
Can't.
Yeah.
Can't go beyond that if you.
No, can't go beyond that, right? But the override needs to be on the year you can't go beyond, right? Because you can't go for an override and then if it goes down, say, "Oh, never mind. We can still fund everything," right? I mean, it needs to be a, two budgets, a cut budget and a pass budget.
So I thought staff was saying that we would need an override for FY26.
So based on the projections that we have currently, I think, I don't know if we can pull them back up, but, um, we can get through FY25 without dipping below. FY26, I think, is questionable. Um, obviously, if things.
I disagree, right?
If things are better than we projected, right, and.
I mean, if you want to put the slides back up, I'll show you why I came to that conclusion.
So then what do you do with capital in the meantime?
No, that, and that's the issue, right? So that's the, we, capital gets funded from the stabilization funds.
And we have ARPA.
We do have ARPA. And we do have ARPA, plus ARPA.
Okay, so you've got, y- y- you got $3.4 million worth of ARPA money. And then you've got.
We have.
Yeah, right, we have. And then we've got how much of the stabilization funds that are available for new projects, not committed projects already?
Capital is around 1.5 million annually. Building, um, it's, I want to say it's about, uh, 1.6 annually.
Is any of that service debt service?
All, it, it, as you know, after FY26, we start looking pretty.
After FY26, it's gonna look good.
It's, we're gonna start looking pretty good.
Unless it all gets spent before.
Yeah, exactly.
It all gets bonded up before that, yeah.
So, I mean, we've got, we have stuff on there for Ambrose that, that is gonna end in 26, that it's big chunks of money, you know? So if we can get out and not have something catastrophic fail on us.
And keep in mind, we're talking about the CPA at the same time, right? So there's, there, there's, there's additional revenue for, you know, that we anticipate with the CPA that can handle a lot of this, these capital projects, right? At least over, at, at least for our planning process, right?
I don't know where yours was.
But what's the cost of those projects at that time?
Close that, you'll see it.
Close your slide, because she's, hers is PowerPoint. Close your slide.
It's right there in the middle there.
What does the, the full scope of proposed capital projects look like? Dollar, dollar-wise?
The full scope of capital projects? What do you?
So if you're saying we, we, this is.
An endless number.
Right? This is $4 million. The HVAC here is.
We're close to $60 million worth of projects in the five-year.
In the year that we just, so the capital plan that you had for fall and spring. How much did you fund?
I don't know.
Versus how much was requested? It, it's like.
Oh, we had like $9 million worth of requests total and we funded about $3 million.
So it just in one, in the current year, right? It gets less, as with everything, it gets less certain as you go to the out years.
And that's sort of chopping off the things that were just. Yeah, we're not doing HVAC. We're not doing town hall HVAC.
It's used.
We could, that, that's not even in that list.
So here's the March 2024 election. Here is the March 2026 election. Before the end of FY26 is the March of 2026 election. The end of FY26 includes the deficit projected to fund FY27. So including that, the average projection, because remember, this, I know we're calling it best, but it's average. It's average when excluding the best years.
Well, I think the middle is.
Okay, so this is the aver- the average when excluding the best years. This is the average. This is the average when excluding the best years, right? So, we will go into, so with the average projection, we would go into this election in March of 2024 with this much in reserves, 9.31%. Because this will not have been taken out yet, because this is what's used to balance FY27. Right? So with the average projection, with the middle projection, we would be going into that election of March of 2026 with 9.3% in reserves, which is within the guidelines. And then we can say to the voters, "We're not going to go to 4.8%." So, the, there's two budgets. There's the override budget that gets us, you know, to whatever, right? And then there's a budget that will get us to, you know, 8% or 6 or 7% that we'll have to cut to not get to 4.8%. And those are the two budgets that you go into an override in March of 2026. That is without spending money on capital. There are, every project that you presented is worth it and I would fund all of those projects if we had the money. And if we decide that we do, we, we should fund them. But we need to understand what the decision that is being made here is. We can save those $2 million to postpone the operating override to March of 2026 or we can spend the $2 million in capital and have the operating override in March of 2024.
And I guess my question is, what is the cost of those capital projects in 2026 or 2027 when you start doing them?
I don't have a crystal ball, but I can tell you this. We just came out of 12 years of free money essentially because interest rates were at 0.25%. So every municipality went and built and bonded just like we did. So constructions costs went up. With, with interest rates at 5%, 6%, do other municipalities stop building so much because they can't afford to bond? Do, then do construction prices come down? That would be what you would expect, but I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know.
But it's always going to be the case that the capital proj, you know, we're not, we're not going to get through them all and so they're all going to cost more over a period of time. That's the tough thing, right? That's why we're prioritizing. Sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, if we don't spend money on capital now and we wait another year for an override, where now our reserves are pretty, say, we have at that point change from 8 to 12%, our, our reserves are right within there. We're not going to be spending more money on capital at that point. So.
The, 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 the problem is the capital deficit keeps getting bigger and bigger. Our, our structural deficit on the operating side gets bigger and bigger, but the capital project i- is getting.
Always will though, Beth, right?
But, but it's growing at a, it's more, it's growing at a bigger rate. The, the, the wa- gap, the gap is getting wider.
So there's always going to be more capital and there's always going to be a larger deficit for capital. So is that a reason that we're not going to fund capital projects?
No, it's a, it's a question of prioritization, right? It's, it's, you know, I think that if we're, if we're using what's essentially operating revenue for capital, that's, you know, uh, and, and we're accelerating in operating revenue, um, it, it's just taking the use of one money and using it for something else. And we have ARPA funds, right? So it's not, if we applied $3 million to this and we used, we cut back the project to, uh, the flatwork, you know, at, at Lincoln, to what it was initially recommended by the school committee and not this expanded project, I think we get it, we get it all done, you know? So, um, so I think we, we, and most of our ARPA money has been spent on capital, right? I mean, almost all of it.
So we have $3.4 million of ARPA money left and you're looking, I mean, these, I, I, I mean, the, this list alone doesn't include, you know, the million dollars potentially we would spend on busing for Lynch. So, I mean, so now we're down to, to, to 2.3 million dolla, I mean, to 2.3 million dollars in, in ARPA money left. So.
How much of that ARPA money have we spent on capital already and without even really addressing?
What you just said was that we can use ARPA money to, to, to spend, but I'm telling you, the ARPA money is going to evaporate pretty quickly when you spend a million dollars on busing.
Well, we're not necessarily spending a million dollars. We certainly, it, it, maybe we will, um, but that's an important part of the Lynch project. So we're still investing in a capital project by doing that, right? So, um.
I'm sorry, you're just, you're just, I'm just not seeing eye to eye with you at all on this.
I ju- I just point out one thing and that is that even if we take where inflation is at, the latest thing, I think it was around 5%, right? At Prop 2 and a half, we're losing 2.5% of our buying power and that's what capital is doing. We're buying stuff. Every year, we're losing 2.5% right now, just due to inflation. And that, that's just looking at inflation. That's not looking at what the real acceleration is on the projects that we're looking at and, and the cost of the equipment that's going up. We're going to, we're going to have to come back through here, Beth knows this, and, and revote. And so does John, uh, um, on just the equipment costs that have gone up since we finished this capital cycle. And it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So that's true, but so is the operating budget, right? Because the costs of the operating budget are also going up.
But we control, we can control the operating budget.
We don't, we can't control health insurance costs?
No, but we can control, we could, we could cut, we could cut things.
Okay, so, okay, but that's the thing, right? So now what you're saying is let's go pay for a roof and lay off teachers.
No, I'm not saying that.
Well, but that's the way to cut.
I'm saying is we could.
The operating budget. How else do we cut the operating budget?
We cut 200,000 from the municipal side and there was no pain really inflicted.
So what other cuts would you recommend to the municipal side then to pay for the capital side?
I'm not recommending a, any cuts at this point because I don't think especially, I'm saying in the future, if you're looking at the biggest crisis to the town, it's capital. It's not the operating override because you can, you can, you can, you have control over that.
But we've been spending on capital, Rich. I mean, I mean, look at the transfer station project. I mean, you know, we set aside what we put a million dollars of capital into that project to reduce the number. And then we're increasing, you know, the resident permit sticker fee to the highest rate in Massachusetts. It's a lot, right? We've gone up, you know, over a hundred dollars in the past, you know, couple of years. So that's an additional to- cost to everyone that's independent of the stabilization fund. We did $10 million for the. We did ten million dollars for the um, the Morocco immediate repairs, right? Because that was too much for the stabilization fund, so we didn't override for that, and we included the flood mitigation work as part of that, so, um, you know.
Is your financial plan just to stay status quo, just stay on this, the course we're on?
Um, no, I mean, it's to um, hear what the priorities are for health and safety for for capital. And fund our budget to what the requests are, um, that are reasonable for the department.
So you just heard the health and safety stuff, and I'm saying, let's give them two million dollars, you know, extra this year to to work with. Are you for that or against that?
Um, so it's a, it's it's kind of, it's a little bit of a false narrative, so I gotta push back on you a little bit here, so again. What Mariano was just discussing as well, I think, is is where I'm at, is that we're accelerating an operating override. Uh, by taking what's essentially operating funds, turnbacks, right? Um, and using them for, you know, capital, so, um, if we are gonna. We're we're essentially going out for like a capital override by doing it this way, right, so. Um, so I don't know, I think we've got um, ARPA money that we can spend, that we have been spending on capital, we've been spending a lot on debt exclusions. Um, uh, we've been getting a lot of work done. Um, I I'm.
But I just sat here and listened to you guys an hour ago talk about how, you know, we've got other permanent projects to come through, our revenue, you know. The this, our best case scenario really isn't our best case scenario.
I agree with that, yeah.
So, so, so we're actually gonna have extra money down the road.
Yeah, so this is what two million dollars spent in capital, right? We could be at eight percent, you know, the average puts us at eight percent, still within the range, but I think it's gonna be higher still. I don't think we're gonna have three years of declining, because we've never seen that, right, I mean, it would be really.
So so why wouldn't you make that investment in capital now, knowing that these cost of the projects are gonna go up?
I'm not saying I wouldn't make that investment. Um, I'm saying this is, this conversation we're having here is a conversation that this board's going to have to justify at town meeting. Cause we don't get to make that decision on the free cash, town meeting does, right? This board only gets to make the decision on the two point something million dollars left of ARPA funds after the uh busing, right? So two point three million of ARPA funds this board can vote on, but this is the conversation that needs to happen in front of town meeting. And I'm hearing constantly from town meeting members, from finance committee members, who are saying, what is going on? Why is the select board talking about spending down the reserves in order to accelerate a um, operating override? Because that is the messaging that's out there, and I think it's gonna be very tough to go to town meeting with that message. I'm not saying I'm against it at town meeting, I hopefully I will be reelected for town meeting. At town meeting, I might vote in favor of that, I think there's a lot of capital needs, but that is the discussion that we need to have. Are we saying, are are we spending it down to have an override in FY, in uh, March of twenty four? Or are we going to try to make it to twenty twenty six? That's because that is what we're doing, we're not talking about spending two million in capital. We're talking about spending two million in capital and accelerating the operating override, right? I mean, there's, it's, there's no money. Exactly, yeah, there, there's no free money, even though it's called free cash, it's not free.
But I mean, I hate to see those library windows after twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven.
Is there an interest in similar to what was done with the transportation project, where you just said, here's a million dollars of free cash to put on the project? Instead of putting the money into the stabilization fund, picking off one of these projects and putting an article on. The town meeting warrant to fund one of these projects with free cash, as opposed to circling it, cycling it through.
I think that was the idea, right, and that's why it was a separate project, it was to just go fund it at spring town meeting. But I'm telling you, the the issue is that there will be a lot of pushback at town meeting, because I'm already hearing that pushback. From town meeting members and from finance committee members, who are saying, why are we spending two million dollars in capital when we're showing a declining? Uh, reserves graph, right? I mean, because that's what we're doing, right, and the only possible explanation is because we wanna have the override in March of twenty four, so that the override is not. Four months after the CPA vote.
I I'm sorry, but I would have to disagree with that, that's, that is a false narrative. The reason you're doing it is because stuff is broken and we need to fix it. There may be something else going on here about accelerating, you know, something into the future, but the reason you spend it is because we have these problems.
I understand, but that conversation about spending a two million dollars so that we would have the operating override earlier is on can, is is has been recorded.
Not only we have broken things, but they're only gonna get more costly defects.
That's right.
That conversation has already been had, and that's why town meeting members are concerned about it.
So. I I mean, I don't know where that leaves us, except that, you know, we can fund. If you feel more comfortable, we could say, we want, I use a million dollars in free cash for this project, or whatever the number is. You know, we could do specific projects, which we've done in the past, rather than give it to the ca- capital stabilization fund, I just thought that, as Roger pointed out. If they know what they have going into it, they wanna go through their full process and evaluate, and then go to, you know, town meeting and say, this is what we. You know, with the extra funding that you made available to us, this is what we did, this is the process we undertook, and this is the projects that we wanna see funded.
I mean, I think, I thought the two million dollars was because we had two point three million dollars left in ARPA. And that can't go, we can't transfer ARPA money into the stabilization funds, ARPA money has to be spent on a specific project. That's why we asked them to pull projects out of the normal queue, because if if it was just gonna be free cash, we can just take the two million free cash, put it into the stabilization fund. And then in default, they can, you know, can come with whatever projects they have, we don't have to do specific projects. The only reason for specific projects is for the two point three million dollars left of ARPA money.
The exercise was to, if we were to give, you know, a sum to the capital stabilization fund, you know, what? What projects would you do?
But we can just give it to the stabilization fund, and then it can just go through the regular.
Right.
Capital process, again, the the specific projects, the reason that we say the the library windows are a million dollars. Is so that this board can take a vote, can take a vote right now, and say, transfer a million dollars from ARPA funds to go fix the library windows. We could take that vote right now, there's no town meeting, there's no stabilization funds right now, the money's there.
So you wanna use ARPA money, or you wanna use, the only capital projects you wanna do are with ARPA money? You wanna save the free cash so that we can, you know, extend an override out?
I might get to that conclusion, yes, but what I'm saying is, before we spend any free cash, if. We have this pool of ARPA money, that we can't use for the operating budget, we can't use for the stabilization funds, but we can go use. For these issues that we have right now, so let's spend the ARPA money, and then. A meeting has to decide if they wanna put additional money into capital.
But we need to decide is, we need to put an article on for town meeting, and the warrant closes March tenth.
I mean, we can put a, um. We can put an article for town meeting, we can put a um, a placeholder, we can put a motion, and then we can definitely postpone whether we want it or not, so. I mean, that's. Putting an article is not, it's an.
I I don't know, I'm not hearing, I mean, to my surprise, I guess, and and Mike, really, to my surprise is with you, because, you know, for a year and a half, I've sat on this board. And I've heard you talk about cap- the capital problem, and how we need a capital override, we need to fix capital.
Yeah.
And now you've kind of reversed direction in the last sixty days, um.
No, I I just, I just don't think you're listening, I mean, I I think I've been, I'm pretty clear, I mean, it's, you know, we've been spending a lot on on capital. We spent almost every dollar of ARPA on capital, which is good, I feel good about that, that's why capital, I mean, that's why ARPA is restricted to that kind of stuff, right? So, um, I, you know, I'm, I I I, if we wanna spend the, you know, remaining amount of ARPA funds. Uh, to prioritize um, additional capital projects, right? We just put a million dollars into the turf field at Norton Stadium, right, so, um, and we identified that as a health and safety issue, it's not nothing, right? That takes that out of the capital queue for something that was never gonna get funded otherwise, because it wasn't necessarily a project that the capital committee saw. Was more important than a roof, right, so, that that was the conversation around it, right, so, um, we did the transfer station project, I mean, I I.
We've had a lot of deferred maintenance, it's a lot of things.
We always will though.
So the answer to your question is, we put two point two million dollars of ARPA into capital already, because all of ARPA except for. Five hundred thousand dollars has been capital. So it's been, uh, so of ARPA, we've spent two point six million, about two point one million capital and about five hundred thousand uh COVID nineteen and mental health.
And we still have all these other projects to do.
So we put two point one of ARPA into capital already, including the eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar turf field, the. Five hundred and forty thousand dollar public safety dispatch equipment.
Right.
The two hundred and thirty thousand dollar pump station for our window, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we did something with the fire as well, I think, um, so, I I don't have the list in front of me as you do, but I mean. Um, again, so I, I mean, I feel comfortable spending more of it, I mean, I expected that we would be spending the ARPA money on capital, because that's a deliverable for us.
That's what I thought the two million dollar in projects was, I thought it was for the remaining ARPA funds.
That's what the discussion was anyway, when we had it, so.
I wasn't here. Well, listen, you don't wanna do anything, that's fine, I think it's a grave mistake, I think it's financially a responsibility, but we can just maintain the status quo, and we won't take any action. We'll see what happens in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, when we all try to go sell our houses.
I I think that's a little unfair, I mean, I think that we're, we're, it it's okay for us to disagree, I mean, I think that we, you know, are coming at it from different perspectives. Like Mariano, I've been hearing a- all from a lot of people that expenses are getting out of control, and um, they were, they were happy to support. Um, the Lynch project, that was a very positive project for the school, there wasn't anybody that was against it, everybody knew that we had to do that, right? It was in rough shape, uh, it's gonna be great, but that hasn't even hit, you know, people's taxes yet, right? And so I think that um, part of our strategy, our strategic look at this, is the CPA, right? So that's why we're working on that to handle some of these, these projects that will increase our capacity to handle capital projects. That's essentially what the CPA is as well, right?
Well, I just don't know what the cost will be in twenty twenty seven, when we get around to doing the HVAC in this town hall, because, you know, that's when, that's when the CPA funds might be available.
Yeah, but I mean, that that that, again, that project was something that was not in our capital queue before, you know, we hadn't identified funding, it came in. More than double what we thought, right, so, um, we have to find a way, independent of the stabilization funds, to do that anyway, right? Roger, that's not gonna be something that's gonna be in the capital queue, no way, so, um.
Not at seven million dollars.
Not at seven million dollars, right, that's an override, so, um, and it's not even gonna be probably something that we can do from the CPA. Um, frankly, because um, we would have to lever up the CPA, right, when we opened it up, and we, and I don't think anybody wants to do that, right? So we know it's a bad habit. We we did it, we did it when we had to.
Twenty thirty five.
It's what?
We'll get to it around twenty thirty five. Alright, so we don't wanna take any further action, you you guys are all set with the way the course, the 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 road.
Of having things in a bucket, so for example, if capital, we need a lot of money for capital, it's for override for capital, and if it's twenty million dollars, it's twenty million dollars. Right, and then, you know, and, cause I do think that, yeah, if we're true to ourselves. Uh, depleting our reserves by two million dollars, drawing them down, I don't think we have any crises, really, for the most part, nothing's, nothing's a crisis, it's all challenges. But the world's not gonna end, it's gonna be fine, and um, so then we go for override, then. It's it's necessary, and we didn't take funds to, you know, to to my, not necessarily my honest point, but you could see how someone could perceive it as a catalyst. To drive the override to a specific date, and I don't really know that as managers, we wanna do that, so that that's, that's where my brain is on it. So I'm agreeing with you that, like, and you know, as far as like what the school needs, I'm like, okay, we'll leave five hundred thousand dollars there. And then we'll spend the rest on capital from ARPA, and we'll figure out next year, next year, cause they don't know what what that transportation number is. Um, and then we can get some, some of the things done on Ro- on Roger's list, um, so, so that's where I'm at. Now, just Roger, uh, we had Tool here, uh, three weeks ago. And what struck me about the, all these traffic improvements, cause you know, um, as as Mike knows, we've invested a lot of money in traffic improvements. And um, I asked the representative of Tool, as we make improvements for areas, do we just drive traffic? To another part of town? And she said, yes. So when you go through your capital ranking process, do you consider that, that there's, that's really, it's it's really not, it's not necessarily solve the problem? It's just drive, it's just giving another neighborhood that same problem?
No.
We do not.
The the.
Do you think it's a valid conversation?
I think it's a valid point, but as as the town manager, still acting town engineer?
No, come on, you're behind the times, huh?
I'm I'm still the town manager and town engineer currently.
You're still acting town engine, that's what I'm saying.
Town manager, but there's no backfilling.
About the acting.
So I'm currently.
High value, that's how we're doing things.
Uh, no, it comes to us.
Go up.
From engineering department.
It comes to us fully formed and recommend- recommended from staff, we may ask questions. Um, like that, but that's more honestly, uh, something that has been resolved or uh, been debated beforehand. And you guys, whenever you do.
Most of what we have been able to fund are safety improvements, not like, like. Church at Waterfield, right, where we had a pedestrian fatality, where we have to do something, right, to make it safer for people, not. Not projects where we're um, like, on a corridor trying to slow traffic down, like we had attempted to do on Highland Ave, right? It it's been more very targeted, like, we have a very huge problem right here, and we need to make a solution that. Solve somebody from crashing into the neighbor's house.
And as I mentioned in the memo, we didn't even consider traffic projects in this list, because it's.
So just to move this along.
Yes.
So there's no appetite at this point to give capital planning any extra money at this point, is that what I'm hearing from the group?
From operator.
From operating, yeah. Yeah, so, so ARPA, we're going to, you know, look at all these requests that we have, and figure out what to do with ARPA.
Yeah, can can we reach out to our delegation too on the um, the school projects on the um playground? So, um, Representative Ciccolo, Representative Day, so, um, it seems like that would be something that's, you know, um, your mark territory for those things.
Thanks, Roger, for coming.
Thank you, thanks for letting me make the pitch.
So at this point, I don't think, there's, we don't need to discuss anything about the state of the town committee? Cause we're not committed to be on a road to an override, it sounds like?
Yes, that's right.
So Beth, do you wanna just talk about the ARPA stuff that you have in at this point?
So, um, I have three um, items I just wanted to mention, um, we did get a request from the library director, um, Nicole Langley, who's here this evening. Um, for approximately forty five thousand dollars to support technology and wifi upgrades at the library, I think. Um, I don't know if Nicole wants to add anything, but they are having trouble supporting the users that they have in the building. Particularly during peak hours after school, um, and so that is certainly within the range, you know, within scope of what um, ARPA funds. Were originally intended for, um, we also received a que- a request from um, the superintendent of schools, Dr. Frank Hackett. Uh, formally requesting ARPA funds to cover the cost of bus transportation for Lynch students to Parker's Swing Space. Um, they're estimating an annual per year cost of two thousand, two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars. For the F, for the twenty three, twenty four school year, and then for the twenty four, twenty five school year, so somewhere.
Can I ask you a question about that, um, didn't uh, Dr. Hackett say that he applied, or the the school department applied, applied three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars? Of S R money?
They apply that to the um, to the special education out of district tuition, not to the busing, so.
So there's no S R money left, that's depleted all their S R money?
Believe there is still S R three, that was S R two money that they used fully, I believe there's still S R three money available.
So is S R three classified for something different, or is it?
You have to ask the.
I think it's still special education.
It's all special education.
I think that's, yeah, um, maybe learning loss stuff as well, but I think that was the, that was the the restriction that, um, we had with the S R funds, it wasn't as broad as ARPA.
Um, so they expect to have a better number in sometime event to late March, but um, it it, you know, it's a four hundred thousand to a million dollars for, over the two year period. Um, and then the last item is, we touched on this briefly about the VFA update, so, um, the town mains maintains. Currently, um, a building related capital needs program, VFA, uh, is the company software program. Um, about seven years ago, I think we did kind of a comprehensive upgrade to that. We should be on a regular cycle where we're doing that, probably every five to seven years, and so kind of the time has come due for us to to do that work. Um, part of it is, they will come in and do um, a reassessment of the buildings as we request, it's also. Since the last upgrade, the high school building has been constructed, so it's basically bringing the high school facility into the program as well. Um, so that's estimated to be somewhere around a hundred and forty thousand dollars, it could be done through a capital request. I think the staff's recommendation is that we fund it through ARPA, because it is um, kind of important for the overall, looking at the overall capital needs of the town. And it would allow us to get started on it quicker.
So we did this seven years ago.
Somewhere around there, I wa- I was not.
In intervening seven years, have we had, has that been maintained?
So DBW does do some main, maintenance of it on an annual basis, but I think, and, and I'm, Pete, Pete Lawson's really the one to kind of speak to it. But we're kind of at the point where we need kind of a wholesale upgrade to it at this point.
But not, uh, you know, it's fine to spend money on software, but if, if you're not main, if you're not using it, there's no point.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not the software itself, we're, we're pay, we have an annual software fee that we pay every year to have it. This is like paying VFA to come in and reassess our buildings, and bring all that information into the VFA software to help us better protect our capital needs.
There's no participation by the town in those intervening five to seven years of importing the status of different capital, so, types of things. What I don't, what I don't, what I'm missing is, i- it seems like there should be, like every software, I know, you have to be active in it, and you can't just sit there.
Again, I don't wanna speak for the TPW, but they do do that at some level, um, and I think...
That's my question. The, the le- the level I really wanna understand is like, i- is it, you turn it on, and you put three things in there once a month? In meanwhile, 'cause we don't have really much, much information on equipment, life cycles. I know the FinCom, when they talk about capital, they really have a lot of questions about that. So, I'm all for it, but I think it, it, it only works, it's only valuable to the town if we have someone who implements it on a regular basis. And who's gonna own that? I, you know, and we're gonna give them the resources to do that, to do that. I, I get, I'm sorry, which go ahead.
So I thought part of the proposal was for VFA to come in every year and also update it, to make sure it's updated every year.
The data's in it.
So that's not part of the, this one forty?
So get it up to, get it up to, you know, to, to where it should be for standards. And then, going forward on a regular annual basis, making sure that that software, working with DPW, make sure that software is up to date.
Yeah, 'cause you wanna have a dashboard, so you can look at where, of, of what's going on.
It's ongoing maintenance.
Yes, for, for, for plant and equipment.
Is there funding for staff that's necessary to like, can you train, you know, someone to be doing this a little bit more regularly?
Yeah, so I think that was part of the discussion we had about the new employee at Lynch, is maybe wrapping that into the job description.
Yep.
Yeah. But I do think it's important that, as Rich said, we work with VFA on an annual basis to make sure that we're maintaining it as well, yeah.
So with these requests, we also have, we had the Leonard proposal, and I think there's a few others that we've touched on different times.
We funded a few, the town hall lighting, um, we funded the design, uh, for that a couple of weeks ago. Um, the Mystic School windows is something, we funded the evaluation of that, that, um, you know, there's a, a lot of work to be done out there. Um, so, yeah, there's certainly, um, more out there in terms of ARPA.
The idea wasn't to vote on any of these tonight, just to get an update, and then, you know, maybe vote, you know, in the next couple of meetings.
I have a question on the library one. Um, you're working with our IT director on the library upgrades?
Well, I'll let Nicole be the one to answer.
Or does the library have a separate?
That's okay.
We were checking in with him. Of course, we also have the library network, the Minuteman network, that actually helps us with a lot of the rest of the technology. We have been checking in with Matt, just because of his expertise and, and all of that, um, so we have been working with him, yes.
And it's going from a hundred megabit to five gigabit, does that increase the operating budget, this one?
That was the other thing I wanted to mention to the group, and then the rest, for the rest of the meeting. I'm already suggesting changes to the trustees within our own, our, already, our operating budget, so there wouldn't be any extra cost in the town that would help mitigate some problems happening in the future. Um, so there's ways that we can do that, that are allowed by the State Board of Library Commissioners. Um, and we're already looking to do some of that. So I'm hoping both of these projects at the same time, or both of these ideas will prevent us from getting to the position that we're in. We have to restart the wireless three times a day. We can't update, upgrade access points because the wiring is too old. Um, we had, there's public complaints on our, uh, Google, on our website about the wireless dating back several years. So it, it's definitely time to do something.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can vote on that now. I mean, it just doesn't, I don't see that's gonna be any different in a week from now, you know?
Yeah, and I'm...
It seems like something probably that...
Forty-five thousand dollars is reasonable to me.
It could get started.
Actually, you have, did you say you have to, uh, increase all the wiring to Cat Six?
We have to replace all of the wiring.
And that's only gonna cost forty-five thousand dollars to replace the wiring over there?
It's pretty good.
Sold!
Nicole, are you, uh, this went down to the fifty-eight cents, so do, are we, this, do we wanna, do you have a little contingency built into that number, or...
That was the, that was the exact amount for the quote that we received, um, so...
Why don't we say fifty thousand?
Yeah.
That was the exact amount without any contingencies. I, I told them, no holes in the walls, please. But, uh, that's barring any, there's no unforeseen circumstances worked into that.
Fifty thousand?
If there's a motion.
Yeah, I would just even it out for all of our sake, accounting-wise.
It means up to, you know, we have to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, and if we appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to improve the wireless in the library?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes? All right, so on the rest of it, we can put together maybe a whole package for ARPA, what's out there, what we talked about at our meeting, and what... You know, I think the school one is, I think we need some more information, where we land on that, I mean, it's kind of broad at this point. Um, I also don't understand if there, um, if there's a cost baked into that of what they're, you know, is there apparent cost involved in that? Or is that just, you know, the town picking up the job?
No, no, I'm, no parent, we asked that question, and they said no, because they didn't want to dissuade people from taking the bus and creating a traffic issue with the school, into the neighborhoods.
Plus, a lot of them will be more, more than two miles, so would be required to provide the transportation anyway, for sure.
All right. So anything else on ARPA tonight?
I think that's it.
Okay. So just going to the spring town meeting warrant articles? So, the only one, I mean, these are all pretty standard articles. The only one I wanna point out is Article sixteen. Beth, I don't know if you wanna talk about that, I can, it's back to you.
Yeah.
But this is, has to do with, you had, this is your memo, but that has to do with the, the Lynch.
So right now, the way we propose it is there'd be an article sponsored by the select board to vote for, um, for town meeting to vote for engineering services related to the traffic improvements, and the intention was that, that would be funded out of the, um, capital stabilization fund as part of the four hundred thousand dollars that was voted. Um, just in terms of timing, so this would, they would start after July first, which means we would issue a ban, and the interest on that ban would not be due until FY twenty-five. So we would have a full year of that four hundred thousand dollars coming into the stabilization fund in FY twenty-four, where it wouldn't be used to pay for that, so that would be available for capital use for other purposes. And then in FY, FY twenty-five, we would pay, you know, the interest on the engineering, and then presumably, and by FY twenty-six, we'd have the construction coming in as well.
So that, so that article is on there. You don't have any issue with that?
I would put an article to say, to make a transfer from free cash to the capital stabilization fund, 'cause then, if you put it there, then you can continue to have the policy discussion of whether you wanna do that or not.
Well, I've had the policy discussion for four meetings now. I really haven't gotten very far, so. I mean, if you want it, we can do it, but it doesn't sound like there's an appetite.
I'm not gonna be sitting here when you have to make the yes or no vote on that one, so.
There doesn't seem to be an appetite on the board to do it, so. Um, that's it. Are there any other articles that are...
Um, I think they're all, they're all rest of our standard.
They're all, rest of them are standard issues, there's nothing else that we'll put on.
We can, we can run through it again next week, you don't have to vote it till next Monday.
Is there anything we're missing?
And we don't need, that will be in the fall, I guess, for the, um, healthcare, if we, that'll be a turn back, and then we'll have to put it, okay?
Yeah, it would be a, um, free cash appropriation, like we did last fall.
Yeah, town meeting might appreciate if we do have a policy around like a, a percentage of what we're keeping there, so it's not, um, because just filling it up and not applying it is probably not ideal either. I know that's what FinCom doesn't like.
Um, it still has a, it has a placeholder for the opioid funds, that it added.
So we still have to appro, we, we're not...
We're not creating a stabilization fund, where you still have to appropriate the general.
So we got, we got money after fall town meeting that we have to appropriate, and then, um, yeah, it'll work its way through.
Any questions on the warrant? Anything we're missing? All right.
Um, and Matt Abrahams will be here on the thirteenth to talk about the water and sewer rates, 'cause that's our, our focus right here.
Great. All right, so I think that's everything on the business agenda, just the consent agenda. Any questions? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion?
If we approve the consent agenda as printed for Monday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, WinCam. Thank you, everyone.
You.
Have a great night.